Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's session of the Tacoma Park City Council. I'd like to call us to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Tawala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sirci.
Here.
Okay, before we get into our, oh, I guess, no, yeah, before we get into our public hearing, I'll look through the agenda that we have coming up. Let's see, today is April 28th. It is the last meeting in April. On Monday, May 3rd, we will continue our special budget work sessions, starting at 7:30. And the budget work session that evening is our budget reconciliation. So, big night, Monday night. Then on Wednesday, May 5th, is our regular meeting. It starts at 7:30. We begin with a proclamation, then we have voting sessions on purchase orders for bus shelters, leaf vacuum, and street furniture, and recycling, and trash containers that we will be discussing this evening. Our work sessions on the 5th tentatively include continued discussion of procurement items, and tentatively the subdivision of 7402 Garland Avenue. We will continue our discussion on the 5th of the restructuring of committees. On Tuesday, May 11th, the city council is meeting in an administrative function session to start interviews for the city manager. Then on Wednesday, May 12th, we have our regular meeting at 7:30. Our voting session that night will be first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2022 tax rate, first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2022 stormwater management budget, and the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2022 budget. We also have tentatively scheduled that night votes on procurement ordinances, and attentively a resolution regarding subdivision of 7402 Garland Avenue. Our work session that night tentatively is a discussion of committees. And then we have scheduled Monday, May 17th, another administrative function session for the city council to continue city manager interviews. And then on Wednesday, May 19th, at our regular meeting, we will have the second reading on the adoption of the tax rates, stormwater management budget, and our overall FY 2022 budget, and tentatively a work session on committees. And that will take us to the end of May. This evening, we kick off our meeting with a public hearing on our city manager's proposed fiscal year 2022 budget, and the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022 tax rate. This is our constant yield public hearing. So, the new city's new fiscal year begins on July 1st, 2021. And in accordance with the charter of the city of Tacoma Park, the city manager has prepared a proposed budget for council consideration. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 accounts for the city's financial activities. And we had our first public hearing on the proposed budget on April 14th. This is the second public hearing on the proposed budget, as well as the public hearing on the proposed tax rate, which is proposed at 55 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. This is greater than the constant yield rate, which is at .5295 this year. The constant yield, as a reminder, is the rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenue the state of Maryland estimates will be received by the city during this current fiscal year 2021. Let's see, the first reading of the budget ordinances is scheduled for Wednesday, May 12th. And the second final reading of the budget ordinances is scheduled for Wednesday, May 19th. So, those folks that were signed up for the public hearing, first we'll do the public hearing on the FY 2022 tax rate. And Chantel Warzala is our first speaker tonight.
Good evening. I thought I was your second speaker, but pleased to join you this evening. And thank you for having the hearing. I do request that the city please adopt the constant yield tax rate for the coming year. Couple of reasons for that. First, the city has actually increased the overall residential property owner contributions to the Stormwater Management Fund, and that will begin this year. As you'll recall, there was a shift in funding for the stormwater management from commercial property owners to residential property owners. And while it's now differentiated according to imperviable surface area, it is an overall increase for residential property tax owners. Second reason I think it's appropriate to stay at the constant yield rate is because the city will be receiving quite substantial federal revenues or federal resources as part of the COVID packages that have been passed recently. And so, given those increased resources, it seems that this would be a good year to give your property owners a break. It's not really a break. It's just a constant set of tax payments next year as this year. And finally, your residents and businesses are still being impacted by COVID. And many are still digging out of some financial challenges that they experienced last year. So, for all of those reasons, given that fiscal context, I do believe that it's appropriate and consistent with the city council's commitment to fiscal responsibility to stick with a constant yield rate. Again, that means people pay the same taxes as they did last year, by and large, across all property owners. I also just want to share that I'm still quite confused that the city budget refers to the employment cost index as something that should be applied to the tax rate. I am reading from the Bureau of Labor Statistics website, and it is about compensation costs for state and local government workers. So, this index is really something that the council should be using as a benchmark for how much city employee salaries should be going up over the next year. It really has nothing to do with the tax rate or tax property assessments, et cetera. So, I would request that you think of the employment cost index as applying to the compensation costs for our municipal government workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Arthur David Olson. Mr. Olson, you signed up for both public hearing on the tax rate as well as the budget, and you're the second person to speak and the final person to speak on the tax rate. So, you may have six minutes to do both at the same time.
Oh, had I known, I would have structured this differently, but I'll go ahead.
Sorry.
David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. In the past, the council has discussed the idea of having different property tax rates for different types of property. If I understand correctly, Sydney staff has worked with county staff and made it possible to charge different rates. But I've heard no discussion of that option this year. Commercial property tax, commercial property owners were given a tax break when the city eliminated the inventory tax. They have the capacity to pay higher property taxes, and the city can recover at least some of the lost inventory tax revenue. I hope the council will consider a residential property tax rate of 53.64 cents, a constant yield rate, plus this year's federal cost of living adjustment, and a commercial property tax rate of 55 cents, the maximum allowed, given the city manager's proposed budget. Now, switching gears to the budget itself. Last year's proposed budget included funding for commemorative markers. The funding was cut from the approved budget, and this year's proposed budget has none. I hope the council will add funding for historic markers addressing matters of racism at Hafner Park and on Lee Avenue. I've received the most recent available version of the city's equipment replacement spreadsheet, applying standard straight-line depreciation formulas to the city's inventory. The full funding level for the reserve is about $900,000. The proposed budget includes just $700,000 as an addition to the equipment replacement reserve. The city is asking the county to make 100% of roadwork capital project payments called for by the county's formula. The council can provide a good example for the county by adding 100% of formula capital replacement cost to the equipment replacement reserve. I hope the council will do so. Page 63 of the proposed budget shows general management wages going up 22.89%. This category includes the city manager's wages. The city is losing a city manager with decades of experience in Tacoma Park government. The new city manager will have less experience, and I'd expect them to get lower pay as a reflection of this. I hope the council will ensure that the adopted budget has lower pay for the new city manager. Page 237 of the budget shows city street ADA sidewalk work being completed after spending about $1 million over the next four years. I failed in my efforts to obtain a list of such work to be completed. I hope the council will check that the $1 million is adequate to complete the work. Finally, page 237 shows a budget of about $250,000 for new sidewalk work. In an era requiring six feet of social distancing, the five-foot-wide sidewalks that the city has been installing are inherently unsafe. I hope the council will freeze new sidewalk spending and ask for a study of whether it's best in the long term to install wider sidewalks or repurpose vehicle lanes for pedestrian use. Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Olson, and apologies. We'll try and get that list to you as well. Great. Next up on our public hearing on the FY 2022 budget is Mr. David Blockstein.
Good evening. I'm David Blockstein, 7016 Sycamore Avenue in Ward 3. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Tacoma Park Mobilization Environment Committee. First, I want to really thank you all for your time and effort. And the list of upcoming meetings in May that you mentioned, Mayor Stewart, is just really daunting. And so, I want to thank you for all of your time and great effort for the city. I wanted to speak briefly about the sustainability budget for the city. And I, and our group, request that the sustainability budget be at least a level funded from the adopted FY 21 level of $537,000. The reason for this is fourfold, at least. One is that sustainability is once again appropriately a top priority voted on by yourselves at the city council. Secondly, much progress is needed to advance the city's Sustainable Climate Action Plan. You adopted a framework more than a year ago, and now it's time to really move to fleshing that out and implementing it. The third point is that the city needs to be ready to take advantage of opportunities that are provided by other levels of government. Montgomery County Climate Action Plan, which is nearing completion, new state legislation related to sustainability, much of which was advanced by our own delegate, Lord Charcutian, and also the anticipated federal action on green infrastructure and economic recovery, all of which will provide opportunities for the city, but also will need us to have our own act together and to be implementing things on the very local level. And the final point is that, as the city council noted several years ago, we're in a declared climate emergency. It's still a climate emergency. The emergency is not getting any better, and so it's past time to really step up our efforts. So, I thank you on behalf of the Tacoma Park Mobilization Environment Committee, and again, request that you at least provide funding for the Sustainability Office at the Sustainability Budget at the level adopted in FY 21. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Sally Kern.
Mayor Stewart, I don't see Sally Kern on the meeting yet, so I would suggest you move to the next person.
Great. Is Mr. Burn Kelly with us?
He should be here.
Hi, I am here.
Great.
Good evening. Yes, hi. Thank you so much. And I want to give a special shout out to Casey and Daryl Braithwaite and Mayor Kate for their appearances and discussion on something that David Blockstein and I both care dearly about, our climate change. And I come from the side of stormwater management. And I believe that we need to acquire properties where, you know, voluntarily, and implement much larger systems of infiltration and capture, attenuation of the ten-year storm. And luckily, this bonus of the, you know, our president and what he's trying to do for our country, I've heard the number 14 million has been allocated possibly to us. And I think that two things should happen with that 14 million. One, I think you should not raise any taxes of any property owners. I think that stormwater management fee raise is a perfect thing to increase funding because it affects all of us in an equitable manner. I don't think that property taxes are the best thing to raise during a pandemic, and I think that we can make up for that shortfall somehow with some of the 14 million. But we do have areas of public open space and private, such as my lot. And I did receive two feet of water in my house, and my neighbor got a window and a door pushed in, and people on Westmoreland, Poplar, and Circle, and Cockroll, and Second, and Fourth, all got hammered. And there's been a lot of activity, and we discussed that last night. And we know you film everything, but I do really seriously think we have to invest in possibly large box culvert, large infiltration, even if we're going to tear up the junction and put a building there. That may be a great opportunity at the top of the problem to capture and hold water. And the way the infiltration boxes work is they're built under the slabs of buildings, new buildings, and they take borings and dry wells and vertical thing, you know, there's engineering that's involved, that allow the water to be attenuated, a large volume. And then it slowly can be released either into the storm drain system, or if you get great percolation, we have some amazing flocks that are all sand around here. But that's a possibility that we should be looking at monetarily going forward in all our budgets, you know, until we get a hold of how we're going to be carbon neutral and how we're going to not have people's homes become inhabitable. That will only destroy our tax base further. And my house is vulnerable. I now have to buy flood insurance. I had a $9,000 claim, $2,000, which I paid. And I want to, I want to thank the city manager and the staff for the work they did to support local businesses. I got in on the second round. And I'm not based in a commercial area. I'm based out of my property, like a lot of professionals and small, you know, you see guys with trucks all over the place. This is the working class, you know. I may have a good degree and all that, but I'm a working man. And I, and I make jobs for other working people and pay, you know, $18 to $35 an hour to my people. I support a living wage at the Prince George Chairman of Commerce when it first came out for the state. And so, I appreciate what the city was able to do to support my business during this time and keep that reserve, in reserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Next, we have Seth Grimes.
This testimony is on behalf of Tacoma Park Mobilization and Silver Spring Justice Coalition, both members of the Montgomery County Defund and Invest Coalition of over 25 groups. Our concern is proposed FY 22 Public Safety Staffing. Let's look at the police department's handling of two last year incidents. On April 7, 2021, off-duty Pentagon Officer David Dixon murdered James Lionel Johnson and Dominique Williams at the Tacoma Overlook condominium. That was just three weeks ago. A year ago, on May 6, 2020, Dixon confronted a homeless woman, Sierra Ford, in the building lobby. Dixon pointed a gun at Ford and pepper sprayed her. The Tacoma Park Police Department did not arrest and charge Dixon at the time. Investigators failed to ask for lobby surveillance video, so they failed to uncover the assaults and weapons violation they later charged. They asked Ms. Ford whether she wanted to press charges, and she declined, so they simply left. The TPPD knew Ms. Ford was homeless, and on May 6, 2020, they knew she had been pepper sprayed by a police officer. Surely, they were aware of the huge power imbalance. Further, they knew Ms. Ford. Tacoma Park officers arrested and charged her on at least three prior occasions. Ms. Ford is an example of a vulnerable community member who did not receive the assistance that might have helped her. If licensed mental health professional responders had led the 2020 intervention, it's a good bet that the confrontation with Dixon that day would have been fully investigated. Dixon's brandishing a gun would have been discovered, resulting in Dixon's arrest in May 2020. If Tacoma Park had licensed mental health professional responders, the murders of James Johnson and Dominique Williams would not have happened. The proposed FY 22 budget would eliminate one officer position from administrative services and five from operations. It proposes adding six positions to criminal investigations. We support eliminating the administrative services and operations positions. Regarding operations, I wrote last year, "We talk about data-driven government." What do the numbers say? Tacoma Park crime numbers have trended down over 10 years from 739 crimes in 2008 to 483 last year in 2019, matching national trends. That's one and one-third crimes per day on average, and one violent crime every three days. This trend hasn't been affected by police understaffing. Has criminal investigations been able to function adequately without the six officers the city manager proposes adding? Despite the 2020 failure, presumably a matter of procedural management and training lapses, I know of no data that supports adding positions to criminal investigations. I have researched the matter. We therefore ask you not to create six new criminal investigations positions. Noting particularly the need illustrated by the mishandling of interactions with Sierra Ford, we call for the creation of a new Mental Health and Social Service Response Unit within Housing and Community Development with licensed mental health professional staff. Finally, we reiterate our calls for elimination of the city's K-9 policing unit, thank you, Councilmember Sirci, and for reassignment of the Neighborhood Services Division, which handles parking, housing, and environmental code enforcement, to HCD. The city should also move its crossing guards to HCD. In written testimony, I point you to advocacy posted last year. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Next, we have Nadine Block, and I believe she is on the phone.
Yes, I've asked her to unmute, so I'm hoping.
Hi.
Nadine.
Is he calling me? Sorry, I'm driving. I just pulled over. Thank you, Nadine Block, Ward 3. I'm, I just heard what Seth had said, and I want to follow up on a few things. I would really like us in this budget to reflect on what actually keeps us safe. And it's really clear to me that we, in order to answer that question, one would come up with the answer that we don't need a budget increase for the police. I'll leave all the specifics to other people who've mentioned them. But I'm really interested in, first of all, not increasing the budget, but decreasing the budget. And within that decrease, also allocating funds to police, to what would typically these days be police response, but what is more appropriately to be transferred to mental health or social work response. And of course, any kind of restorative justice programs that we could increase or add to our police department would be appropriate. I also am really curious about why we still have a K-9 unit that we're funding, when I understand that we're not supposed to have that anymore. And the, finally, as far as the budget goes, I know that we do get this 14 million over two years coming to Tacoma Park from the COVID Relief Act. And I would really like to see that actually apply to people in our community who are in need right now. And I know that the city manager is recommending otherwise, but I think that that's really unconscionable. And speaking of the city manager, I would like to support the call for a reduction in the city manager's salary and benefits that we currently offer, since they just seem to be out of line with a lot of other elected officials. I know she's not elected, but also staff across Montgomery County in the region. So, those are my comments around the budget, and I do thank you for all your work. And I really do hope that you'll be able to set leadership, even in our small town of Tacoma Park, and reclaim some of the progressive values that are being enacted across the country and across the world to reduce reliance on police and violence. There goes one. No. Violent activities against ordinary citizens, particularly folks, black and brown folks, folks of color across our region. So, thank you very much for that, and looking forward to reductions in the police budget as well as increasing social services. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Block. I don't see Sally Kern hasn't joined us yet, so that will complete the public hearing on our FY 2022 budget. Before we begin general comments, I just wanted to make sure people saw the statement that we posted, the city posted earlier today regarding the ongoing situation in Tacoma Junction. I'll just read it quickly so people have it. "Over the past week, the city of Tacoma Park has been actively involved in discussions to bring about a resolution to an ongoing dispute between Neighborhood Development Company and the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. The dispute is regarding the co-op's use of the city-owned parking lot at Tacoma Junction for deliveries and parking. The lot is leased to NDC, which in turn leases it to the co-op. Last week, the city formally asked NDC to rescind its earlier demand that the co-op immediately discontinue its use of the parking lot site. The city also asked NDC not to interfere with the co-op's use of the city-owned parking lot for its deliveries and parking for its customers so that the co-op could continue its current sublease agreement. The city set a deadline of February, April 23rd for NDC to comply with those requests on Tuesday, April 27." On Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, attorneys for the co-op filed suit against NDC and the city of Tacoma Park. As a result of that legal action, the city is currently evaluating possible courses of action while at the same time continuing to seek a resolution of the issues. And then I also had a statement, in that statement that stated, as mayor, I'm extremely disappointed that NDC and the co-op have been unable to successfully resolve these issues and that this dispute has now moved into a court of law. NDC must abide by its existing agreements and the city is exploring all possible options to find a solution to the situation. It is in the best interest of our residents that these issues get resolved as quickly as possible. So just wanted to make sure, because I imagine a number of the public comments tonight regarding that issue, that make sure people had seen that. In addition, I did want to also acknowledge that particularly on the Tacoma Junction project people, they're still able to put comments on the city website that everyone can see. So I know people have been emailing, but that's also another way of providing your opinion and comments. And again, when you put something on the city website in that form, it, people are able to see that. So now we will turn to general public comments this evening and our first speaker is Mr. Paul Yubner.
You got me, Jesse?
You're in.
All right, shall I, shall I start?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council members. I'm here to urge you to stop the Neighborhood Development Corporation, NDC, from developing the city lot at the junction, as this project no longer bears the least resemblance to the redevelopment recommended by the Tacoma Junction Task Force, the mayor and council members' original goals and promises, nor the project requirements and resolutions guaranteed by city leadership. NDC was selected to develop this junction site based on their drawings of what was a reasonable, historically sensitive two-story building, the approximate size and height as the surrounding structures. ND's planning, NDC's plan included a component for affordable housing, parking, dumpsters and loading docks in the rear, as well as public space of at least twenty-seven hundred square feet of contiguous space for community use. Shortly after being selected by the city, NDC began making dramatic changes to their plans. Affordable housing, gone. Historically sensitive two-story building, reflecting the size of existing buildings at the junction, gone. Instead, a huge building, twice the height of the food co-op, covering the entire lot and significantly encroaching on the forested rear slope. Insufficient stormwater mitigation will have nearby residents with water running off into their neighborhood and lawns. Loading docks and dumpsters at their rear, gone. Instead, a lay-by sprawling across the front of the building where trucks would be unloaded and dumpsters empty. Activities that would spill out onto the public sidewalk, making walking, biking and catching the bus inconvenient and unsafe. Parking, the promised number of parking spaces greatly reduced, with paid parking for junction businesses and the city residents that own the lot. Continuous public space for community members, no multiple non-contiguous space, including tree stands to serve as our community's public gathering space. NDC has failed for nearly five years to produce a development able to pass county or state highway safety demands. NDC has had to ask for multiple variances from the city, the county and state for safety, for parking, for stormwater, for relief from the city council's requirement that the food co-op be the anchor tenant. And now NDC has revoked access, revoked site access for the co-op, choking off food delivery, leading to potentially the end of the co-op. This community wants a reasonably sized building with our community grocery, the food co-op as the anchor tenant. This community wants reasonable space and accommodation for access and parking. This community wants public space on a city lot bought with taxpayer dollars. NDC's radically changed development plan for the Tacoma Junction. No owner meets these needs of the community and must be stopped.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Yubner. Yes, the C clerk is, I forgot, Ms. Block also had signed up for general public comments. Is she still on the line?
She is.
Uh, yeah, let's see. I don't know if she's driving again or if she's still parked, if she wants to go now. There she is.
Yeah, I can attempt to go now. And again, Nadine Block, Ward three, thank you for taking my comment. I think it's pretty clear that what we have on our hands is an untenable, unviable development. And we've seen over the past number of years that they cannot actually produce the appropriate development. So the only option right now, given especially the fact that the developer has broken the lease, the ground lease agreement and the agreement of sublease with the co-op, is to drop NDC. And this should happen as quick as possible. There doesn't seem to be any kind of alternative that the city could imagine participating in right now. And so that's my recommendation that we, and that my, my demand, if you will, that the city embrace its leadership in this and get out of a bad relationship with NDC. And this would involve later perhaps having some kind of accountability process to figure out what actually happened. I just want to add that I wouldn't want to be personally known as the mayor or the city council who's responsible for killing the co-op or forcing it to move if it does move from Tacoma Park and then we lose our only locally, in, in the mains part of the city grocery store. And so I really think that you should really consider this and move on that decision appropriately. We have seen that the NDC behavior of, in essence, trying to padlock the city lot is one that they have tried before in other developments, when Black Lives Matter protested them and the Zine Wood actions. So this is not out of character for NDC. There's no reason to believe that they would act better at any other point in the ninety-nine year contract that is currently enforced. So I would recommend that the city drop NDC immediately. And lots of activity down here in Washington today. I hope everybody's okay. Thank you for this time to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Block. I'm still not seeing Ms. Kern, but we'll come back to see if she joins us. Next, I have Sue Miller.
Good evening, Sue Miller, Ward three. We find ourselves, our city, in an unprecedented crisis. The city has repeatedly referred to this crisis as an issue between NDC and the co-op. That is not plausible. Unsubstantiated allegations were made by city staff and then retracted. We await an explanation. It's the city's land, the city's tenant, the city's agreement. And what is on the line now? Fifty union jobs with benefits held by people from around the world are on the line. These are not typical minimum or subminimum wage restaurant or retail jobs. Our only main street grocery store is on the line, a store that has fed us and feeds those who need food in the pandemic forming lines through the junction. A regional economic engine is on the line, a store that supports a network of two hundred small local brewers and bakers and candlestick makers that supports Ethiopian and Middle Eastern and vegan soul food businesses. The heart of our community is on the line, a store that drew people to live in Tacoma Park, a store that draws shoppers from throughout the DMV, a store with ten thousand local member owners. Our small junction businesses have spoken out because they are on the line. Why risk essential services used by people of all income levels, laundry, copy shop, car repair, for upscale retail and offices? We find ourselves in a relationship with a developer who seems never to have understood the essential value of our co-op. This developer has now ignored and disrespected you, our council. A huge red flag waves before our eyes. What is clear after years of new plan iterations is that it is not possible on this small and complex lot to create a safe plan that meets the city's criteria and will make the kind of money this developer wants to make. The only way to resolve these issues is to walk away. Please lead us. Help us envision the best use of this lot in a world upended by the pandemic. Help us to begin to heal as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we had Brenda Platt.
Yes, hi, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to make public comments tonight. I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for more than thirty years and have been a member of the co-op since before it moved to Tacoma Park. So I care very deeply about the co-op and our local grocery store, but I also work for a national nonprofit called the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. And a big part of our work is actually protecting independent businesses. We have a new campaign called Small Business Rising, which has more than sixty thousand independent businesses across the country, including Gina Schaefer, who's the owner of our local hardware store. She's a very vocal member. And this campaign is looking at safeguarding the right of small businesses to compete and serve the needs of their community. So tonight I kind of wanted to address a different part of this issue. Just like you, I'm sure you're sad and frustrated by the current developments and I, you know, and anger probably, you know, is another emotion, we could say, but, you know, this, right now in the middle of this pandemic, as we all know, there's been tens of thousands of small businesses that have been wiped out and many more are at risk. And this is probably an unprecedented die-off of small businesses. And during this time, many landlords have allowed small businesses, businesses to defer rents, loans and other obligations. But what has the landlord developer in Tacoma Park done? The opposite. It's trying to evict our co-op. So I'm here to really urge you to explicitly support small businesses rather than law, large corporations. I mean, one of the competitors for the co-op in natural foods is Whole Foods, which is owned by Amazon and their growing dominance and stranglehold over independent businesses is really unprecedented. They have predatory tactics towards small businesses. So, and I also just say that embracing small business is crucial to reversing inequality too. If small businesses continue to disappear from the landscape, we, it will fuel more extreme inequality and further entrench the corporate giants that rule us and threaten our democracy. And as it was already pointed out, Susan Miller, you just said this so well, that the co-op supports not only is it, it own independent businesses, but supports so many, like the craft brewers that can't actually sell their wares on other supermarket shelves, they're blocked. So I, I think it is really, I encourage you to really, you know, retain local control for the public good, step up. What's required is leadership now to overcome these threats to small business survival. We need to create a built environment that suits small businesses, that includes affordable commercial space. And we have the freedom to govern our own fate, let's use it. So I encourage you to drop NDC now. It's proven that it's not a good partner for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person we had was Lauren Van Tolden. I don't think she's joined us yet, so I think we'll go to Merrill Lefler.
Okay, uh, let me, I don't know if I'm on screen here, but that's okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Merrill, yeah.
You know, for six years now, residents of Tacoma Park have been caught up in this contentious arguments, as we see tonight, with the city council and each other over the NDC development plans for the junction parking lot. To begin with, this plan has never taken into account the junction as a whole, namely the Carroll Avenue businesses and their needs. The developer's aim has been to squeeze as many revenue-producing businesses into an unaccommodating space at the confluence of two heavily trafficked roads and everything else. This is not new news. We've been saying this now for six years. If I was a developer, my goal would be NDC's, get in as much as you can. After all, that's what developers are in business for, to profit from their investments. But I'm not a developer. I am one of the many city residents like we have tonight who support diverse businesses along Carroll Avenue, long-running businesses and the new ones that have been coming in to the junction. And all this with severely limited street parking. The hub of the junction, its heart and soul, is the co-op and the parking area that services not just the shoppers, but its businesses. The city, meaning the city council, should be doing everything it can to help sustain businesses that have been there, that are there now and those that are going to come in the future. Sustaining these businesses has to do especially with parking in the city lot. Such parking does not negate development of the lot for new businesses there and much-needed public space at the junction, but it does negate shoe-horning in as many rental properties as possible, never mind the consequences. Should the co-op have preferential treatment in all of this? I say absolutely. The co-op is no ordinary business, which the city council recognized in nineteen ninety-eight when it actively invited and worked to enable the co-op to move to Tacoma Park at this location. It is a cooperative, as Sue said, of ten thousand members. Its goals are to serve the different communities that make up our city and serve is the operative word. They do that. NDC's ill-conceived plan of a lay-by for deliveries, let alone an underground parking garage that would add more congestion and pedestrian hazards, was rejected by the Maryland State Highway Administration as too dangerous. Of course, why is it taking so long? So what recourse does the developer have in order to push through its development plan? Undermine the co-op, starve its business so it has to shut down and they can then proceed with their development. The city council invited NDC into a, into the city with a ninety-nine-year lease. It's like renting out your house and then your renters lock you out. We signed a contract, they say. This is our house now for the next ninety-nine years and we'll do what we want. That is the tone of the neighborly NDC letter that directed the co-op to, quote, "immediately halt loading and unloading operations of the Tacoma Junction parking lot." This letter serves as the landlord's thirty-day notice of termination of the sublease. This is outrageous. The junction does not belong to the Neighborhood Development Company. It belongs to the city of Tacoma Park and it's.
That's, that's your time. Thank you very much.
The several with NDC.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Karen Elrich. Karen with us? I thought she was with.
I think she's muted.
Yes. Karen, you should be able to, there she is.
Very good. Okay, I'm sorry. Good evening, it's Karen Elrich. See, we have a theme going on here this morning, this evening. Did you know that many developers offer grocery stores free or reduced rent? Why? Because grocery stores bring repeat customers in a steady pace to the development. NDC missed the boat when they wouldn't negotiate affordable price to have the co-op their anchor store. A business that has been around for forty years has ten thousand member owners who shop there along with many folks from outside of Tacoma Park and within Tacoma Park. This was such a big mistake that they have yet to find another anchor store. They have failed to create a plan that didn't violate the requirements of our state and counter regulators. They are, in fact, I believe, going to have to ask for yet a fourth extension. Why? Because this plan is just too big for this small of a space. They need too many waivers to make it happen and they don't seem to know how to create a plan that meets the requirements. Do we really want a ninety-nine-year lease agreement with a business that has not been able to create a viable plan and breaks the rental agreement that they had with not only the co-op but with a city? They have put all of you in a very bad position. I assume you have read the comments on the city webpage and I'm sure you've heard of the hundreds of people that have been coming out to show their concern over what this developer has done. Drop NDC and let's start working on repairing our city and doing something exciting at the junction for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we had Karen Anderson, but I don't see that she's joined us, so we'll go to Catherine.
Hi, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm asking today that the city council please end the deal with NDC. NDC is trying to shut down the co-op by telling them they can no longer use the city lot for deliveries. This is unreasonable and is a breach of the agreement between the city and the co-op. The co-op is a valued and successful Tacoma Park business that provides fifty union jobs with benefits. The co-op takes care of its employees. They were the first grocery store to switch to online-only shopping at the height of the pandemic. They did that to take care of their employees and us, their shoppers. They've also been a valued partner, supporting Small Things Matter, donating food to them and giving them a place to pack, to distribute food to our neighbors who are left out of COVID relief. Tacoma Park co-op serves the community as a grocery store and a visionary model of community involvement and environmental and social justice. I knew. I moved to Tacoma Park because of its spirit, which the co-op embodies. The co-op is a wonderful source of organic, healthy vegetarian food. I never have to check labels to make sure things are safe for my family. They just are. The NDC does not care about Tacoma Park, its local businesses, or maintaining our sense of community. In fact, NDC has a track record of choking out small businesses in DC and has been challenged by Black Lives Matter activists. Please support the small, local junction businesses in the spirit of Tacoma Park and end the deal with NDC.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Strongen, Andrew Strongen.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I speak here tonight, as a friend put it, more in sorrow than in anger, to urge the council to correct both its narrative and its course on the junction development. Just this afternoon, the mayor lays the city's trouble at the feet of NDC and the co-op, minimizing its own role and opportunity. Three years ago, almost to the day, when NDC and the co-op were stuck, unable to reach a deal that would situate the co-op in the new development as the natural anchor tenant, I wrote the city manager with copies to the mayor and Ms. Kostick. I challenge the city that is now to use its power to broker a deal. Speaking of that power, I said, "Use it or lose it." The city manager was dismissive, telling me, quote, "There is more to this discussion." NDC has been and continues to be negotiating in good faith. I replied, "I've been in the business of gauging the quality of negotiations for twenty-five years in many hundreds of disputes. I know a broken promise, process, when I see one. I see one here." The city stepped on the gas, taking us on an unnecessary, bruising, ugly, three-year campaign that has polarized the city. And the development is now at a full stop following the state highway's rejection of the lay-by, which ought to be today's headline. But instead, we have a different headline. The People's Republic of Tacoma Park, funky Tacoma Park, progressive Tacoma Park, size with developer sued by food co-op. Oh, my goodness. How could that possibly happen? The city manager's fact sheet, now retracted, remains in the mouth of the developer, which is seemingly trying to put the co-op out of business, barring delivery operations, indirectly threatening all the other junction businesses. Those same operations have been happening for this, with the city's blessing for over twenty years. What are we talking about? This is the same co-op the city manager just last month described as, quote, "vital and loved", adding that they're ensuring, ensuring their continuous access to grocery deliveries is critical. That much at least was consistent with the council and mayor's repeated pronouncements. Too late, though, to avoid this. Civil action number four eight five 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 four in the Circuit Court of Montgomery County, the food co-op versus the city of Tacoma Park, Kay Stewart, mayor and defendant. That cannot feel good to the mayor. I don't think it feels good to anybody. So let me say it one more time to the whole council. This process is broken. Please take ownership and leadership and drop NDC now. Thank you.
Thank you. The state clerk, I had Mr. Byrne Kelly next. We can go to Mr. Schlegel, but I think Mr. Kelly also signed up for.
Yes, Mr. Kelly is back in.
Okay, great.
It's available.
Thank you.
So Kelly, you go, and then Mr. Schlegel.
When I moved to Tacoma Park in nineteen eighty-three from Washington DC, where I grew up, I came here seeking political representation and affordable group home living near the infamous Tacoma Park Silver Spring co-op on Sligo Avenue. The legend of Sammy Abbott and how he stopped the Northeast Freeway still reverberated when I got here. I wanted my taxes to go to people who represented my working-class values. My, how things have changed since then. Our current chief executive, Ms. Manager Ludlow, and Madam Mayor are reminiscent of the past administration that just left the White House. Our executive has fabricated lies by generating fake news so as to achieve personal goals and fabricated financial probabilities, while ignoring hard-working, tax-paying citizens at great expense to the city financially and in terms of our reputation. While all of this was going on since the Junction Task Force recommendations were delivered over five years ago, our councilwoman and now mayor has been complicit by creating a sense that somehow the development company she and this council approved of is something more than just another greedy developer, who, in fact, does not share our historic values. And the majority of the city council all got into bed believing fake news, but this developer was going to do what he said he was going to do at the outset, and this project was going to keep our co-op in business no matter what without interruption. This developer, Adrian Washington, who shuttered businesses and padlocked them and was marched on Black Lives Matter, does not represent any of our citizen values. And yet, this council and this executive must somehow believe otherwise. Shame on you. Even now, in our face, this deceitful and untrustworthy developer is trying the same stunt he did in Deanwood to our beloved co-op. How can you be so blindly naive? Why are you not walking away from this project as you continue to spend our tax money on the city attorney while grasping at straws? Why? Why are you so similar to Donald Trump, Mike Pence, Rudy Giuliani, and nowhere close to Sammy Abbott? I implore you to become woke to this racial injustice, gentrification, a dishonest and greedy developer, and to walk away from this catastrophe. Then I will ask the people of this republic to demand the executive and mayor to resign, or shorter that, they should be impeached. Sincerely, Bern Hackett Kelly. And there are eleven thousand, eleven thousand members of the co-op now. Thank you.
To Schlegel.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm Roger Schlegel at sixty-five twelve Allegheny Avenue. The idea of a partnership is really just a big concept. It takes its form in the details. When something's not working out overall, you can tell because the details don't work out either. That's the way I feel about the city's partnership with NDC. The January site plan has more basic problems than any prior version that NDC's brought forward. No amount of spin can hide that. The saddest moment in that recent listening session for me was when, over several minutes of questioning, NDC's representative gradually acknowledged that in calculating the size of the public gathering space, he was counting tree boxes, bike racks, stairs, ramps, spaces where doors needed to swing open, sidewalks, all of it. It was plain to everyone in there that there was no meaningful public gathering space in the plan, no place to hold a real community event of any kind. And then he went further to admit that lots of that area would be privatized in the form of dining tables for the restaurant or the cafe. Basically, he was coming out and saying that NDC had no interest in fulfilling the letter or the spirit of the requirement for public gathering space. As you can imagine, I've closely examined every drawing submitted, and there are many other details that show NDC's disregard for the community's objectives for this project. Every omission, not to mention the failed lay-by, seems to be the result of a single-minded commitment to get every possible square foot of profit out of the site and about externalizing or ignoring a great many community needs that NDC had committed to fulfill. After SHA's clear determination last month, the lay-by idea was a no-go, NDC still didn't take responsibility for coming up with a solution on-site. Instead, they again opted to externalize the problem with their cruel move that placed the co-op's existence in jeopardy. The co-op is also a partner with the city and has been for twenty-three years. I can't think of a single way in which the co-op has not paid attention to the details in its partnership with the city and with our community. In my opinion, they've done better and better over time by their commitments. The details there show that it's a great partnership, one to treasure, one to protect. So six years with four years of time to get feedback and revise is plenty long enough to judge whether someone is serious about being a good partner. NDC isn't serious. And instead of acknowledging that, they're threatening a partner who is. It's time to let them go and walk away. Thank you.
Thank you. App Jones already up, so, Ken Jones.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me on. I'm also going to give about a minute of my time to my daughter, Panina, who's sitting next to me. I'm not going to rehearse everything that's wrong with NDC and the proposed development, which I've, I've made many times along with my neighbors. What I want to say tonight is just how horrified I am at the thought of losing the co-op. When we moved in, which was in nineteen ninety-nine, it, we loved the town. We loved everything about Tacoma Park. But the co-op was the absolute clincher. The idea of living near a place that was, you know, that had organic foods, that was healthy, that would be our, our neighborhood store, where we could run out and get milk when we need it, was so important to us. And it remains that important to us, and not just, not just in a utilitarian sense, but in the sense that others have spoken about it as a community pillar, as just sort of very much what Tacoma Park is and is about. The loss of the co-op, to me, is, would be essentially the loss of this town. I would feel like I was living in an alien land. And I don't mean to exaggerate. I think it's that important. And it would feel like the property I bought and the, and the lifestyle and the experience I thought I was buying into and buying here had just, the rug had been just pulled out from under me if we lose the co-op. So what I want to say is, NDC has proven itself unworthy in so many ways. And we've been told by all, many of you, especially Casey and the mayor and Suzanne as well in meetings that we've had, we've been told over and over and over, "We will get to revisit this. Don't worry. We commit to the co-op," blah, 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 blah. I am trusting that the hesitation I'm seeing on the part of the city government now has to do more with legal things than with your policy or your values. I am trusting that you too are determined to save the co-op, and I am trusting that you're going to find a legal way to terminate NDC's lease, perhaps to actually respond to the co-op's lawsuit by saying that you are in agreement with the co-op and that you want to turn around and sue NDC as well. That is what I'm hoping to see from you, because that is what a responsible city government will do at this point when the co-op is threatened by this development, developer. Let me turn it over to Panina now.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. I have been extremely disappointed with what I've seen on the part of the city government in this matter. I personally thought Tacoma Park represented diversity and progressive living. That's what I grew up with. But all I'm seeing is a lack of action that looks like a disgusting sell-out to capitalism. As a young person, I've expected to see respectable leadership that I can be proud of, and I'm really wondering where that is, because I only feel ashamed. If you do nothing now to save the co-op, you'll be betraying the very people you were elected to serve. So I'm pleased asking you to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, next, we have Mr. Robert Anderson.
Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity. Today's notice on the city website regarding the city parking lot issue did not mention any communication from NDC to the city, which had been required by the city by noon last Friday. While people may think that NDC did not communicate because of the legal actions, they need to remember that the city's development partner had four days after that deadline Friday before the legal actions were taken. So there was substantial time for them to reach out to the city. It's unfortunate your development partner has put you in this situation. You look, you work long, hard hours, and you deserve better. In the discussion of the city lot, people often are not aware that the co-op has always paid to lease the lot. First, the co-op paid the city, and after the city leased the lot to their development partner, NDC, the co-op paid a sublease amount to NDC. When I knew the numbers as a board member of the co-op, the co-op was paying the city around twenty-two or twenty-three thousand dollars per year for the lease. Currently, it is paying NDC at least that or more for the sublease. I don't know what that number is. In the first five years of NDC's sublease of the lot, NDC only pays the city ten thousand dollars per year. What that means is, from the time of the first payment to the city, NDC has been making over twelve thousand dollars a year from their sublease. If the city had retained the lot until NDC provided a plan that county and state agencies could approve, the city would have made twelve thousand dollars a year from the lease to the co-op, just as they had been for years before. This is of particular interest in our budget season. For these first five years, the city will lose sixty thousand dollars, which a developer will collect, even though they have not been able to provide an approval plan or find any tenant. I hope that you take a look at this situation and make appropriate, take appropriate steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, we have Ross Wells. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I skipped the mic. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Jesse, can I?
Sorry, just unmuted. Hi, this is Mike Lastert. I live in Ward Six. So my wife, Jan, and I, we've, we've lived here in Tacoma Park since nineteen ninety-one. I know that's a long time, but nowhere near as long as a lot of other residents around here. And in all that time, this is the first time I've ever felt it necessary to make my voice heard before the city council. Never testified or talked to the city council. One of the reasons Jan and I decided to move here and to make Tacoma Park our home is its history of its activism. Back then, we learned how Sammy Abbott, before he was the mayor, stood up to the Federal Highway Administration and stopped the construction of the North Central Freeway, a road that would have destroyed huge swaths of Tacoma Park, Tacoma DC, and many other neighborhoods in the district and inside the Beltway. Later, he was elected Tacoma Park's mayor, and during his tenure, Tacoma Park declared itself a nuclear-free zone. Tacoma Park was also a sanctuary city, literally one of the first sanctuary cities ever. Salvadorans and Guatemalans came here to escape the horrible warfare in their home countries. In fact, our next-door neighbors are three of those, and their eldest child are three of those Salvadorans. Sammy also started the Tacoma Park Folk Festival. He also instituted Tacoma Park's rent control. Sammy Abbott and his activism were driving forces that made this little town on the edge of our nation's capital unique and special. There's really no other city in the USA quite like Tacoma Park. Earlier today, the city released a statement on its webpage regarding the debacle at Tacoma Junction. Mayor Stort was quoted on that page as stating, "As mayor, I am extremely disappointed that NDC and the co-op have been able to, unable to successfully resolve these issues. While I, as a resident, am extremely disappointed that the mayor and the city council issued an ultimatum to NDC and really did nothing when NDC refused to comply. Of course, the co-op elected to sue. The mayor and city council left the co-op with no other choice. I do agree with another thing that Mayor Stort said. It is indeed in our best interest, our residents, the residents of Tacoma Park, to get these issues resolved as quickly as possible. There is one simple way to do that. The city must cut ties with NDC, and the city must do it now. They must do it today. Until that happens, NDC will continue to hold our city hostage and will continue to ignore any future ultimatums. Way back when, Sammy Abbott mustered the courage to stand up to the federal government and the FHA and stop, stop Tacoma Park from being paved over by a massive highway. Our current government needs to follow his example and muster the courage to stand up to a, to a shady real estate developer, one that's shown itself time and again to be untrustworthy. I sincerely urge the mayor and the city council to hearken back to Sammy's memory and tell NDC to get lost. NDC does not belong in the People's Republic of Tacoma Park. Please do the right thing. Drop NDC. Do it now for all of us. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you. Now we'll go to Ross Wells.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've lived in Ward Three since nineteen seventy-seven. So I'm one of twenty Tacoma Park neighbors who volunteer with Food Justice DMV. Since last September, we've used the city junction parking lot for our food distribution. We also provide essential items like diapers, formula, sanitary pads, and Tylenol to immigrant families who have been intentionally blocked from receiving government aid throughout this pandemic. Our distribution takes place each Thursday and serves over four hundred families in Langley Park and other nearby communities that have the highest rates of COVID- nineteen in the state. I want to, first off, want to thank council member Casey for connecting our group with the co-op. It might not have happened otherwise. The co-op has not only let us use their designated parking spaces, which I now understand they pay for, but has also become an integral part of our distribution, providing space, tents, advice, and food at wholesale cost. Each week, they order produce for us through their vendors, who then deliver it to us on the lot. us on the lot. The co-op has become, in every sense of the word, our partner in providing food justice. We are on the lot every Thursday, and we've been there since September, and we see the deliveries, which are heavily weighted to the mornings. During that time, we have not witnessed any unsafe conditions caused by vendors loading and unloading on the lot. In fact, this former Safeway store that the co-op occupies was constructed specifically with these deliveries in mind, and it's always been used. It's been used continuously for that purpose for decades. We don't understand why this is even an issue. It makes no sense. What has become clear is that NDC has another motive here. They want the co-op gone. Please know that we volunteers value our partnership with the co-op. We support their effort to overturn this irrational and unethical challenge, to block them from using the city lot. We understand that NDC has a 99-year lease for the lot. They also have a legally binding agreement with the co-op that guarantees access for loading and deliveries until construction begins. They must not be shut out of their right to stay in business, the co-op, by cutting off their lifeline. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross. Thank you for all you're doing. Next, we have Karen Lang.
Great, great. Hello, how are you? Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council, and thank you for all of your work and attending meetings like these. So much has been, so many great things have been said tonight on behalf of doing whatever, whatever is necessary to save the co-op. I'm, I'm just here, I can't really bring many other facts and figures. I can only say, please, please do not lose perspective here. It, it feels like the city wanted so much to develop that parking lot that they overlooked a whole lot of stuff, right? And things got off course, okay? Just this great desire to finally develop the parking lot that had been sitting there empty for so long was finally going to happen. But at this point, what is going to be developed on that parking lot that will, that will pay for or replace the co-op that we are about to lose? What, what great thing is coming to that parking lot? I know it's a, you know, who wants an empty parking lot, but what's gonna, what is going to happen there? Even if everything goes right, we get retail and office space, and what do we lose? We lose the co-op. We are not going to be moving forward as a community. We're going to be moving backward. We lose a thing of great value that will be extremely hard to replace. It's where people get food. It's, and, and not just any food, but healthy food, green food, humane food. It's where people gather as a community. It's, it's, it's where people work, and, and it is in the center of our community and is easy, easily accessible by foot or public transportation. It is well-stocked. What, why are we, why are we letting this plan and this project destroy the co-op? I, I know that wasn't the original intention, but that's what's happening now. And I'm not in your closed sessions, I'm not talking to your attorney. I'm just begging you, begging you, to do whatever you need to, to save the co-op. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Next, we have Catherine Desmond.
Sorry, and hold on, I will start my video. I must start my video. I'm Catherine Desmond of Park Avenue. Please allow me a little bit of theater. This is my Tacoma Park mask. If you can see it, it says, "Engage Tacoma Park." Well, today I was wearing this mask when I ran into a neighbor at Ace Hardware, and he said to me, "You know your mask is upside down." And we agreed, even though that was accidental, it was an apt symbol for where Tacoma Park is today, upside down, confused, and hurting. The co-op has sued the city. How is this even possible? So I want to say, between the distance of the Zoom meetings and the veil of secrecy over the closed-door meetings with lawyers, I'm mystified by the events of late, and I'm waiting for an explanation of how a 20-year past practice of safe deliveries on the city parking lot became suddenly dangerous two months ago. Please explain how the so-called fact sheet outlining these unsafe conditions just as mysteriously disappeared a few weeks ago, until the same unsubstantiated concerns surfaced in NDC's order to the co-op to vacate the lot. I would like an open and honest explanation of the course of events. Open government calls for nothing less. But more importantly, I'm not clear how you, Mayor Stewart, view your commitment made to the co-op in the Tacoma Junction redevelopment process. I'm mystified by why NDC has not been sent packing already, but I will continue to believe that you will not be the mayor who stands by as the anchor tenant that gives Tacoma Junction its character and vibrancy, is forced to close or relocate. RNS Automotive, Healy Surgeons, Heritage Construction, Spring Mill Bakery, all have rallied around the co-op in recent weeks as have hundreds of residents and shoppers. Now we need to hear from you. You know the deep roots that the co-op has in our community, and you know the wide reach of its arms as people struggled for food and safety during the worst days of the pandemic. You know that its 11,000-member owners reflect a broad swath of society, and I presume you are a member yourself. With apologies to Shakespeare and Julius Caesar, "Do not let this most unkindest cut wielded by the sword of a company with which the city can cease to do business" caused me to think at 2:00. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next, oh, sorry, I lost my name. Christine Simpson.
All right. Hi, good evening. We are in a serious situation. The NDC's April 15th notice to quit to the co-op, which was apparently based on incorrect information posted on the city's website, is jeopardizing the co-op's survival and the interests of residents who shop there. I believe this council should take immediate action to protect the co-op in the public interest. The city can do this by not objecting to the co-op's request in its complaint filed yesterday, its request for a temporary restraining order or preliminary injunction to preclude NDC from enforcing its notice to quit. In this way, you could help stop any impending damage while you figure out what happened with the city's website and with NDC. In its complaint, the city states that three to five days of no deliveries would be sufficient to deplete the store of most goods, possibly causing it to close. It cannot function without getting deliveries. Echoing residents' wishes, this council has stated many times during the course of this development debate that it would ensure that the co-op had continued use of the Junction parking lot during and after the closed construction, and the city has insisted on reasonable accommodation of the co-op's business operations during and after construction. NDC agreed to these conditions. Moreover, the city owns the Junction parking lot that is leased to NDC and then subleased to the co-op. The city has some authority here. So the city, and I mean you, the council, needs to exercise this authority to protect the co-op and the public by not opposing the issuance of TRO or preliminary injunction, and by insisting that NDC adhere to the terms of its sublease of the Junction parking lot.
Thank you. Next is Colleen Porter.
First, I just want to associate with myself the recommendations on the budget that Nadine Block and Seth Grimes made related to the lease. And my other, my comment, though, is on the junction. No matter how far down the wrong road you've gone, turn back. That's an old Turkish proverb. No matter how far down the wrong road you've gone, turn back. In other words, nothing prevents you, Mayor Stewart and city council members, from the wisdom of turning aside from the fruitless path you find yourselves on. And yes, facing the reality that you may have to start again with the Junction, but with the benefit of many valuable lessons learned, how could you even consider trying to continue working with a partner that shows so little respect to each of you personally, especially you, Mayor Stewart, as well as disrespect to our whole community and our co-op? It appears from the outside that you apparently could not decide what to do over this last week. Like so many others, I urge you to drop NDC. Pay attention to that old proverb. To keep going further down this wrong road you've been traveling for years now will only take you further and further down the wrong road. The city of Tacoma Park still has a live option to walk away from the partnership with NDC, cutting all ties with no financial obligations or fees due at all. This is because the council never gave up its option of canceling the partnership with 10 days' notice, no financial liability involved, because NDC failed to identify an anchor tenant during the 18 months that ended in July 2018. Because NDC has never secured an anchor tenant, you have had that live option constantly at your fingertips. Please exercise that option now for all of our sakes, including NDC. Again, these few words of encouragement to you, Mayor Stewart, and to the whole council at this difficult juncture. No matter how far down the wrong road the city of Tacoma Park has gone, turn back, change course, cut all ties with NDC now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marsha Stickle and George French.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Celebrate, protect, and respect our co-op. NDC did not comply with the city's request to stop and cease and desist harassment, or even to communicate about provoking the co-op to sue. We hate to have to write again about this issue for the umpteenth time, but we fear losing our unique co-op after this latest stunt by NDC and NDC's refusal to abide by the city's wishes. How can the co-op survive not being able to receive deliveries and trash collections from the city-owned lot? NDC has forced the co-op to sue, so our co-op can continue to provide wholesome food, good-paying, unionized jobs with good benefits, a sense of well-being to all, sharing its generosity of spirit with our communities, partnering with other equitable organizations to further outreach, to mention just a few of its exceptional qualities. We believe Mayor Stewart and the council can rescind the agreement, contract with NDC. The time is now. Please use your option and end our town's nightmare. The city cannot afford to lose our most cherished and dynamic business of 40 years to a developer who does not possess Tacoma Park values. Please help our multicultural co-op, a cornucopia of goodness to all, celebrating its 40th birthday year to survive and thrive. Enjoy the TPSS Co-op webpage. Please stand for goodness and not meanness, greed, or avarice, and bullying. From the TPSS Co-op website, Tacoma Park Solar Spring Co-op promotes healthful living by offering wholesome foods, high-quality produce, and community resources in a clean, friendly, and cooperative grocery store that you can own. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Schreiber.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to read a statement by Paul Krostowski, who was unable to attend tonight. "It was with great sadness that I learned that my co-op, that my co-op was compelled to sue my city in order to ensure its very survival in the face of attacks by NDC. As you know, the co-op provides healthy, sustainable food to our community, employs many minority and immigrant people, and supports local and small business vendors. Imagine being a co-op vendor, having harvested a crop, and wondering if you will be able to deliver it. Or imagine you're a co-op employee with a family to support, wondering if your employer will be able to continue to employ you. This business is a paradigm for how a local, sustainable, equitable, and diverse business should function, and yet the city stubbornly refused to stand by it. The divisiveness of this project, including but not limited to this latest attack on our co-op, has caused a rift among Tacoma Park residents unlike anything I have experienced in almost 30 years of activism here. The wounds are deep and ugly, and yet the city has taken no action to heal these wounds and bring people together. This project has been controversial since the day the request for proposals hit the street, and the controversies have only been exacerbated over time. Compromises that would bring the community together and result in a right-sized development at the site were never advanced. Alternative proposals and comments were ignored, and the wounds only deepened. Tacoma Park's reputation as a liberal, progressive community forever will be tarnished. Who is going to heal the city now? It's time for self-evaluation, humility, openness, and leadership. It is in your hands. Thank you."
Thank you. I don't believe anyone else has joined us whose name was on the list. I just want to check with the city clerk to make sure I didn't miss anyone.
That's correct. We have, we've heard from everyone who had signed up, who appeared, yes.
Terrific. And so the next, we'll go to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you to many residents who came out to speak tonight or have contacted me in other ways related to the Junction situation. I just want to reiterate what the mayor said earlier from the city statement, which was that the city is currently evaluating possible courses of action, and we'll share more information in the future. I want to give a big shout out to Darryl Braithwaite and the Wacko Neighborhood Association for a really great meeting last night. Thank you to all the residents who came out and shared your stories about what's happening with stormwater and flooding issues in your properties. It was really powerful, I think, to hear everyone's concerns all in one place, similar to the meeting that was held previously in the BF Gilbert neighborhood, which I was not able to attend, but have watched the video from. And I think it was a productive meeting in terms of sharing that, sharing what people are experiencing, and also really appreciate Ms. Braithwaite's attentiveness to look into the issues and really try to pursue what can be done now, and I hope more in the future with additional funds. I also want to give an update on the Transportation Planning Board meeting, which we held actually last week, but we didn't have a council meeting then. So just wanted to give an update on the long-range transportation, long-range transportation plan. Didn't turn my air conditioning on yet, it's very hot in here now. I'm just realizing. I don't feel like my brain is working as well as it would be if it weren't. So our long-range transportation plan, which is Visualize 2045, this is a plan that the region adopts every several years and update to, and the Transportation Planning Board is going through the process right now of doing that update. And we had a meeting last week where we had an extensive work session on some of the projects that have been submitted from the different DOTs for the plan, and we had, I think, a good conversation about the impacts as it relates to climate change. I think there's still a lot of work to be done on the long-range plan and some of the submissions, and how the region looks at really making some bold changes to address climate change and transportation. But as a result of that first meeting that we had, we added an additional- But as a result of that first meeting that we had, we added an additional extensive work session at the next Transportation Planning Board meeting in May. And we'll be discussing further. We're also looking into whether there could be an extension from the USDOT with regard to when that plan needs to be updated. It doesn't look like it is likely to be approved by the USDOT. It's not something they typically do, but that is something we're looking into. And I just want to let people know that I'm planning on continuing to push for a plan that would really have more reductions in vehicle miles traveled and would reduce GHD emissions and improve safety and equity in the region. And there are a number of officials around the region who are working together on this, although I do think it is definitely a challenge and something that we're going to have to continue to move forward on and push on, and I hope we can come to a positive result there. But I'll share more information next month. But do want to encourage people, if you have thoughts on that and want to share your comments, you can do so on the TPP website. It is www.mwcog.org/tppcomments. And you can review the projects that have been submitted there. There's a lot of documentation, but you can also share your comments in a more general way as well if you'd like to. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I would like to thank Councilmember Siemens for distributing veggie boxes to residents in Ward 5 last week. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other council members? Councilmember DiBala, and then Cercy.
Yeah, thank you. Back to the no raised hand. Thanks to all the residents who reached out to me on the current situation. I had three neighborhood meetings. If you missed one of them, give me a call or drop me a line, and I'll catch you up on what we talked about in your group. Each, each group talked about the budget, stormwater, city manager, junction, depending on the group, maybe not in that order. One thing I wanted to mention to everyone is that the Long Range Slaco Neighborhood Association is taking a page from BF Gilbert and Westmoreland and is organizing a stormwater survey to more coherently explain the problems, the stormwater issues that they've been having in that neighborhood of so very many hills down to two creeks over the past couple of years with more intense rainfall to the climate change. So I just want everyone to be looking out for that. In the category of neighborhood meetings, this, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, Colby Avenue, a meeting in the park at 5:30 to talk about playground equipment. And in the food distribution category in Ward 2, thanks to Adventist Community Services and Councilmember Siemens, we are adding Cheney Avenue Apartments to our distribution list. So the need is still out there. Two more things, both about, it's been, it's been Earth Month, so there's been a lot going on this month, but two more things just to call to your attention for those of you who are interested. Next week is the Montgomery County Energy Summit. It's three days of programs on, particularly on buildings, energy efficiency, and renewables tailored to Montgomery County. You can sign up for one day. You don't have to pay the fee for all three days. And it'll be, it's been in the past a very educational session. And along those lines, Sustainable Maryland, of which the city has been certified for many years now, has been running a weekly series these last few weeks on different new programs that they are adding to the Sustainable Maryland portfolio of choices. And this week was, it was particularly interesting because it was about EVs for municipalities, and we talked about big equipment like trucks and sweepers. So that'll come up later, I'm sure, but I just want everybody to know what I've been up to here besides, besides the obvious. So thank you very much for your attention. That's it for me.
Okay, Councilwoman Cercy.
Hey, thank you so much, and I want to echo Councilmember Kostic in appreciation of all of the residents that came out and spoke tonight. It's really, really helpful to hear from you all about concerns that you have, and thank you, and continue to voice your concerns about the development. Couple things. So over Saturday, man, it feels like ages ago, I had a chance to stroll down Wildwood Drive and got a lot of great food. The Black Lives Matter bake sale was happening, where a number of residents, young residents, are raising money for Black Lives Matter, and they were out there, and they had some delicious cookies and cupcakes and things for sale. And we also have a, a small business that residents also on Wildwood Drive, the 7, 7,000 block, do private catering, and they were actually selling barbecue in their front yard, and that was also delicious. So if you are ever hungry and you just want to support, support small business or support charity and have a chance to engage with some folks, venture on Wildwood Drive on Saturdays around 3:00, 12:00, and 3:00, and get some great food and get to meet some neighbors. So definitely encourage people to do that. The Purple Line is hosting, they're gearing up their community advisory team meetings again, which is great. That means that they're starting to make progress. And so the next University Boulevard meeting will be on May the 19th at 6:30. I know that there was a meeting, an invite that was sent out that said the 18th, but they sent a retraction and said it will be on the 19th. So just want to make sure that people are aware of that. Also want to continue to remind folks to venture out onto Ann Street on Wednesdays for the Crossroads Farmers Market. Lots of great fruits and vegetables, as well as some good food. So if you're looking for lunch, I don't know why all of my announcements revolve around right now, but you know, I'll take it. So definitely want to encourage folks to come out to Ann Street on Wednesday's afternoon and grab lunch. And also, just as a quick heads up, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads is having a Summer Mercado event, and it will be on Saturday, June the 26th, from 12 until 5 on Ann Street. And they're actually looking for vendors. So if you are a business, we're trying to bring together the best of the crossroads community, including local food vendors, artists, musical performers, and community organizations. So if you are interested in being a vendor during the Summer Mercado event, it is again on Saturday, June the 26th, and you can reach out to the Tacoma Langley Crossroads CDA if you are interested. And that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Cover.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity here. First, I do want to thank those who spoke this evening, particularly about Tacoma Junction, and people who contacted me and by email and through the listservs and so on, and who called me. It's frustrating when we're in the legal realm and it's hard to share information. As the mayor stated in her, in her remarks, we're working to try to bring about a resolution of the situation and certainly doing what I can to help achieve that. Did want to announce a few other things. On this coming Tuesday, the 4th at 6:00 PM, there's a meeting, a virtual meeting with Montgomery College on a matter relating to the construction project over in North Tacoma. And the newest information, I think it'd be helpful just for my colleagues to be aware of it, the original plan for that construction site had been that construction vehicles and trucks would use Fenton Street to go to and from the site so that it wouldn't be necessary to go on the, and they would see those budgets kept as they originally were. But for my colleagues, that's a new aspect of the project that's under, under review, and they will, as I said, be a meeting about that on, on the 4th. And for anyone who's listening who wants to be a part of the meeting, you can contact me offline, and I can get the information on how to do it for you. I appreciate that some Ward 1 folks participated in some recent budget discussions I had. They were virtual budget discussions. They were sort of intimate affairs, but it was nice because people didn't just get to talk once, but we had got to have some really nice discussions. And I'm having a further one. It's really in office hours, so anything can be discussed. I was imagining it to focus primarily on the budget, but any topic is welcome. And this is sort of, we're emerging back into the world. So this Friday from 1:00 to 3:00, I'm going to sit on one of the benches or chairs in the public part of the Laurel Avenue Stretery under the tent, but the part down near the post office end. And between 1:00 and 3:00, you can come up, and I'll have my mask, and we can socially distance. But I will say tomorrow will be two weeks since my second shot, so I think it's safe. And if the weather's terrible, we'll figure out something else. But please come between 1:00 and 3:00 on Friday at the, the end of Laurel close to Eastern. And then just two more things I wanted to mention. I've referred to the every-other-week distributions by, at Tacoma Park Elementary School by the ministries of Zion Church and International Church, and they're going to be there again this Saturday, starting about 7:30. The mayor's been there a ton of times. Suzanne Bello's been there. Others have been there as well, many people from the community. If you can't come on Saturday, at least for several hours, and you'd like to help, they do the setup the day before at TPS, starting at noon. There's some light stuff to lift and some heavy stuff. I, I bagged out of it two weeks ago because I had just gotten my shot, and I didn't think I should be lifting big bags of potatoes, but I'll be back there this Saturday. Would be great to see folks there. And then the last thing is I did want to mention also, and Councilmember Kostic talked about this, some, the Transportation Board and the work that they're doing for the, for the longer-term planning and the importance of trying to bring climate change more appropriately into that work. And I circulated some information about this, and something I sent around earlier today. But there's an opportunity for residents to submit comments about that. And as I said in what I circulated, you don't have to be an expert in regional transportation planning or in climate change, to be honest. But what, what Casey has been talking about is the central importance of ensuring that these long-range regional transportation plans are really focused on ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And if you look at the thing I sent out, and if you can't find it, you can contact me about that, too. It's pretty easy just to submit a comment with a few sentences, just to make that point and share it with people you know elsewhere in the region, because it's nice if, and I only hear from people from Tacoma Park on those topics. But this is a great example of how we're involved in regional work here, not just work that's in the city, because something like transportation and the greenhouse gas impact, so that, that's obviously not just in a little stovepipe over at Tacoma Park. That, that's a regional thing. So I appreciate Councilmembers Kostic's work on that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Great. I guess I'll go, one, I want to say thank you to the difference makers at Tacoma Park LM Mill School, excuse me. On Saturday, they held a Youth Global Service Day event all day long, and it was, it was a great event. People were able virtually and some in person in the afternoon to do, to learn a lot about different topics like racial equity and helping people in different communities, sustainability, and do service projects. In particular, I forwarded to our, our Urban Forest Manager and our Head of Public Works, a really cool program they're doing on helping people plant trees and provide assistance. So that's an interesting model that they have going. But I was glad to be able to join them for that. Just also want to do another shout out to our deputy city manager, who continues to help set up COVID testing and vaccines. On Saturday, we'll have the folks come back for their second shot, who were here a couple of weeks ago, thanks to Delegate Charcutian and Safeway. So that's great. And I know she's working on a couple of others that hopefully can be announced soon. So I just want to thank her for all the hard work on that. In addition, I haven't, I've been selected this year to be part of the 2021 Public Leaders for Inclusion Council. This is done by America Indivisible and the Aspen Institute's Inclusion America Project. They select a cohort every year of about 15 appointed and elected public leaders to go through a leadership development program, seeking to bring people together, to deepen skills and knowledge on addressing Islamophobia and impacts on Muslim, Black, Arab, Sikh, and South Asian-American communities. So we've just had our first meeting, and we'll meet monthly, but I'm glad to be, have been selected for that and hope to bring back some of the things I learned. And one of the things that's exciting also about this project is that in September, when the program concludes, there is an opportunity for those who participated to apply for America Indivisible Grants to fund resources focused on addressing anti-Muslim bigotry in our local community. So being part of this program, depending on how everything goes, there may also be an opportunity for us to receive grant money in the city to continue the work. So glad to be able to, to do that this year and be selected. So, and I just want to add my thanks as Councilmember Cover did to Councilwoman Kostic. Given everything that we've been working on in the city, she has really been doing double and triple duty on the Transportation Planning Board. I know many of us serve in different capacities and MML or on COG, but it seems like the Transportation Planning Board is really doing some heavy lifting these days. I just want to thank her, not only just for representing the city, but really pushing the Transportation Planning Board and doing a great job. So thank you for all of that. And now I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. And, and, and yes, Councilwoman Cover, I'll be there doing the food distribution tomorrow. It's, it's, it's a good team-building exercise. Appreciate the camaraderie. Our COVID-19 information is posted on the website with the new, with the updated COVID-19 dashboard. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines are available again, so if you just want one dose, you can try that. There's also much easier access to the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. People are still getting ill from COVID. We've got a couple cases of people that I know that, that have been recently affected. We know what coronavirus can do. Please get vaccinated if you're not. And it, it allows you to go have outdoor meetings and things like that, which is a real step forward. And related to that, Montgomery County is gradually opening up more and more based on the vaccination level. So it is really important. The mayor read the public statement regarding the dispute between Neighborhood Development Company and the co-op. It is posted on our website for those who would like to read the, read the document. One of the big things I've been working on this week, as well as a number of other municipal officials, is tax duplication. And on Friday, the government operations, the GO Committee of the County Council, will meet on this subject. This is very important. It's the recommendation of the GO Committee that has heavy weight with the final county council budget, as they review the county executive's proposed budget. A lot of information is on our city website about that. The chair of the GO Committee is Nancy Navarro. Andrew Friedson and Sydney Katz are other members. One of the things that is a real step forward is that the chair has put forward some opportunities for increased payments to the municipalities, which is a good sign that the committee will really be talking about some steps. This is when the pressure is needed. So in my city manager comments, there are the contact information for Chair Navarro and for the councilmembers Friedson and Katz are listed. Also, please continue to press the county executive, because all of these things need to come together for the municipalities to be fairly rebated funds that aren't the counties. The, if the full amount of an additional $5 million is added to the FY '22 county council, county budget, it would mean about $468,000 for the city of Tacoma Park, which is about 1.8 cents on the tax rate. It is really important. It was, it would only be a stepping stone to larger amounts in the future once the police rebates are renegotiated. This is the closest we've been in 20 years to getting this right. Please put the pressure on. Please put the pressure on. This is the time that we can make real steps forward. And we need to do it this year. So just need to do it. I've listed, many people have already signed up, but we have listed the reimagining public safety listening session for tomorrow, the link to that to sign up. That is at five from 5:30 to seven tomorrow. You can either just submit comments on the city's webpage, on the online forum, on the webpage, or you can register to participate in that listening session. And we want, I know that the task force wants to hear from the community. So it's a great opportunity to share your thoughts. And finally, I'm excited to welcome two new staff to the city government in roles that residents may encounter. One is a new Deputy Public Works Director, David U. Banks. He has a background in affordable housing development, most recently with the NHP Foundation in Washington DC. He's held past positions related to economic development and policy analysis. He graduated from the University of Maryland with two master's degree, one in Business Administration Finance and in Public Policy, and he has a BA in Psychology. Another great new hire is the new city planner, Alexandra Friedman. Alex comes to us from the city of Los Angeles, where he most recently worked for the Department of Transportation in the Vision Zero Division. So we know we'll put him to work. He also has a strong background in equitable food systems, and it's been very interesting learning about that. He does speak Spanish fluently. He graduated from the University of Southern California with master's degrees in public policy and in planning. And he has bachelors from Tufts University in Environmental Studies and in International Relations. They're both really interesting to talk to. They're looking forward to working with residents. So I'm happy to welcome them on board and you know, it's it's a nice step forward to see the to see the excitement and the fresh faces. I think that's it.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much. And it was very nice to see Mr. U. Banks at our budget session on Monday night. So looking forward to meeting them in person soon. All right, our first work session that we'll move into now is a number of procurement items. We have leaf vacuum, bus shelters, and streetscape furnishing. So I imagine we have a couple of city staff maybe with us this evening, is that those items cross a number of different departments. So
Yes, the spray bag is here.
So I think we're doing leaf vacuum first, correct?
Alrighty. We have, as you know, our leaf collection program every fall, and so this piece of equipment is essential to the completion of that work. We have a total of six leaf vacs that we use for the collection and an expected life on each of 10 years. And we've created a program where we replace one each year for a period of six years and then have several years where we're not. And so this is a planned replacement of a leaf collection vacuum that's at the end of its useful life. For those that may recall, we used to purchase this on a sole source procurement. There was one company in our area that produced the type of leaf vacuum that we used, as well as all many other jurisdictions in our area. Recently, we learned there was a second company that was now distributing a similar type of leaf collection vacuum. So we're now able to competitively bid the purchase of that vacuum. And so there are two vendors currently available. So we got competitive pricing from each and are recommending the purchase of the ODB Vacuum, which is the company that we've previously purchased from, was a slightly lower price than the second company available. So if anybody has any questions about the equipment or its uses, I'd be happy to answer.
Am I mute? Sorry, Councilmember Coer.
A different model for leaf collection slash non-collection could make sense, because I know there's an argument that maybe you rake them just off the lawn, or maybe you cut them into small pieces and they go right into the lawn, or you leave them around in bushes and they provide valuable nutrients and so on. So I'm just curious if that's something that you have any thoughts about whether that would make sense.
Sure. Well, this year and in previous years, we have put out information in the city newsletter and on the city website about ways in which you can compost leaves on your on your lawn. I'm typically an optimist, but I think that an expectation that everybody would manage their leaves within their own property is probably unrealistic. And I think that the best we can do is a combination option and perhaps enhance what we started this year with additional information to residents about how they can manage those resources and keep them on their lawn, as well as offering the curbside collection program to collect those leaves and keep them off the street. It's of critical importance to collect leaves so that they don't clog our storm drains and create problems downstream. So it's it serves several functions. An added benefit and one thing that I think the city does well and has done well for decades is we collect those leaves, we grind those leaves, and then we make them available for the public to use as a a mulch for gardens and lawns. So for those folks that can't do that on their own lawn, we have a process where we take those leaves and make them available and and provide them as the resource that they are. Happy to report that every year we do leaf collection, those ground leaves are all distributed to lawns and gardens throughout the Tacoma Park, as well as surrounding Montgomery County and Prince George's County and DC areas and a return to enrich the soil. So before we start our leaf collection every year, we have gotten rid of all the past, you know, previous seasons' collection. So it is a recycled product and one that we are able to collect, process and recycle and put back where it does its best work on the ground.
That's great. And I would just say, when we get close to next leaf season fall, that we just make sure that we do have that information out there again in a way that's easily consumable for people.
Yeah. Through the newsletter and the city website, we can continue to enhance and push that information out to people.
Okay, Councilwoman Costak.
Thank you. I was just curious whether during COVID, we were using all six of the vacuums. I know there was some change in how it was being done, and I was wondering if there had been any reduction in use of them and whether you found that still to be feasible for the long term if there had been.
But we cut our process in half for this past year's leaf collection because we did not bring in the seasonal labor that we normally do for the leaf collection. Usually, our our program spans a five-week period with the six pieces of equipment. As you may recall, this past year, we used three pieces of equipment, limited additional seasonal staff, and extended it to seven, seven and a half weeks. So it was a it was a nail biter for me, but in the end, it all worked out very well. So don't know that I would like to repeat that on a regular basis. It really it demanded a lot of our staff. And thankfully, we have dedicated employees that are willing to step up, do the extra work and make sure that things know, the work that needs to be done is done. I think prior to this year, we had a very well-organized program with with the six zones and the six pieces of equipment and the supplemental staff to enable a pretty quick collection over the course of five weeks. So it's our intention, providing everything is amenable, to go back to the normal schedule for the 21 leaf collection season. But we did make some adjustments last year.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just be curious of kind of moving forward, maybe not dropping down to three, but maybe if we could drop down to five or something like that, maybe that would be worth considering.
Sure, it would extend the time of the collection. So it's just, you know, kind of a balancing between what you add in terms of extending seasonal labor and and the collection process with the review.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Devalla.
I have to apologize for being, I'm not in a dark color, by the way.
I bet you're outside near the apples.
I have to sit on my porch. It's just too nice. I can't help myself. So.
Along the lines of of the other questions, is there any, what's your even anecdotal sense of volume? Was the volume about the same? Was it even more because more people were home? Or was it less because we pushed compost? Not, it was a very challenging year from a scheduling point of view, absolutely, and from a staffing point, and thank you very much. But of making a dent in how much gets picked by a picked up by a truck versus onsite, did you get any sense of that, how that worked?
Yeah, we track for the past two years. Prior to that, we tracked truckloads and number of, you know, number of times the trucks went in and out on the and the routes. Two years ago, we purchased a scale, so we now weigh the trucks when they come in. So we have much more data over these past two years. The one thing I will say is that we've seen pretty consistent reduction in the amount of leaves that we collect every year. I I my sense is that it is not so much to do with in-yard and onsite composting, though I'm sure there's some of that. Unfortunately, I think it's a reflection of the loss of the large canopy oak trees that we've experienced over the past few years. So I'm very interested to see the next LiDAR tree canopy study that we do. I think we'll see some as a result of that. So we have anecdotally for sure noted a steady reduction in the volume of leaves that we're picking up our yard, which is normally feels like two-story-high pile of leaves, every every bit of the space filled, does not quite seem so filled in the in the past few years. So we've definitely seen a reduction. And I can attribute some of that to onsite composting, but I think more of it is the loss of of some of our large trees.
But not enough in your judgment to warrant not getting, dropping from six trucks, six vacuums to five, right now? Right, okay. Yeah, I'd be interested. Another vote here for really trying to get people who can, because not everybody can, to encourage onsite composting. Thank you.
Great. I'm seeing no other.
Absolutely support that. I think one of the things that we try to sorry, we just try to balance is to get the leaves off the curb as quickly as possible, because the longer they're out there, the more irritation and frustration and safety issues they pose to residents, and the more we hear about it. So it really is our goal, you know, we've always said within two weeks to get your piles, but if we could get it within a week or 10 days, we would all be better for it.
I just want to say thank you. I think, I mean, last year was with COVID was really hard, but I think in prior years, right up to that, the way you've shifted and really responded to residents has been great. So I know you, every year, I think you reevaluate and look at how we can do the service better. And so I really appreciate that. So I'm not seeing any other hands. This will come back to us as a voting item next week. So and I think, Ms. Braithwaite, you're probably hanging out for when we do reconciliation, because I think we're going to have some questions about the street sweeper. So we'll be back on that in a moment. Next, we're going to go to bus shelters. And, ah, Ms. Grisby, how are you?
I'm good. Thank you. How are you all?
Great.
And as you recall, we've been working on looking at ways to improve amenities for people who use buses as a primary mode of transportation. We think this is a way of making tangible steps toward council's identified priorities with the climate change initiative and the race equity initiative. This is our first opportunity to do some significant installation of shelters. We have needed to get some of the ADA compliant pads in and as you recall, we've done the background work identifying sites that had high ridership without shelters and starting to chip away at them. So we've identified five with an additional location that we have not yet confirmed. The five are two at the intersection of Flower and Houston. That's a result of the complete streets work that enlarged the pads, so they are ADA compliant there and we can install. One on New Hampshire Avenue north of Holton, it's right by the Taco Bell there. That is not in the contract with Insight, the company we do our advertising shelters with. And so they are not in a position right now to expand what they are doing for their advertising shelters due to the lack of revenue, given the the shutdown of the virus. And I, that particular location has 158 boarding, average boardings daily under pre-COVID data. So that's a lot of people to be standing out in the rain. We thought it was worth going ahead and installing one ourselves there. And the other two are on Maple Avenue, one at each end, really, and those concrete pads were poured this week. And so the sixth location, there are a couple of options we're looking at, and I don't have that one confirmed yet. Our contract with Insight, the company that does the advertising shelters, includes the option of non-advertising locate shelters that we can choose to install. The city can choose to install at locations that the company that doesn't find meets their advertising requirements. And because of the need, I think, to make bus transit a more comfortable, safer, reasonable option for more people to choose, I think it's worth moving forward now on our on our own with that. We have money in the budget. And this was an outgrowth of our discussion with you all before the FY21 budget final was finalized. And we walked you through the map and the background research we had done. That is all available on the city website. If someone wants to drop in bus stops in the search engine, it'll take you to the page and the information is linked there. I just want to highlight that we know from INTERCEPT studies done by WAMADA that the metro, the riders on K6 are 79% people of color and on the F4 line, they're 89% people of color. So we recognize that this is a specific population. And we very much want to move forward as council had identified prioritizing sites based on for average boardings, race equity considerations, climate change considerations, cost and safety. Happy to answer questions.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for that. If this expenditure is approved, when will all the stops, bus shelters be completed?
We're hoping that they can be installed by June 30. The the it's going to be calling it close, so it may end up that we ask for first budget amendment to carry some over into FY22, but we're pushing hard to get this in the next two months.
Okay. I'm glad to see Flower Avenue is getting at least one. I'm advocating for this since Flower Avenue project was initially brought to the council. Is there any potential for another stop, or is it just one and that's it for Flower Avenue?
It's actually two shelters, one on each side of Flower at the intersection of Houston.
Yeah, but I can't I can't claim credit for the Silver Springs side, but all right, thank you.
But your residents probably use whichever shelter they whichever bus stop they need to get where they're going, good jobs from a larger catchment area.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Councilwoman CFC.
Great. Thank you so much for this presentation. I my pre-COVID memory of things is just all messed up, but for the Holton Lane in New Hampshire Ave Bus Shelter, is that the one that was hit by the car?
So there are two, one on each side of New Hampshire. We are looking at installing on the east side, the northeast corner in front of Taco Bell. It was the west corner that was hit by a car. And that pad is also, the reason, so let me back up. The company has that location listed in The company has that location listed in their contract with the city that requires them to replace if it's damaged and, or repair if possible. So in that case, it needed to be replaced, and they came back and said the pad wasn't ADA compliant, and they wouldn't replace the shelter until it was ADA compliant. So that should be happening in the next couple of weeks. And so I've already circled back with the company and said, all right, so you're on the hook for this one. We want that one installed at the same time if possible.
Okay, and so, so we do have the resources, because if I remember correctly, to make that pad ADA compliant?
We do. So council also allocated funds specifically for ADA compliance for bus shelters. And so we're making it compliant now, and then at no cost to the city, the company will reinstall the shelter that was destroyed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Devalla?
Yes, thank you. While we're going down memory lane here, tell me about the intersection, the bus, the bus shelters at the intersection of New Hampshire and Ethan Allen Route 410, which were also discussed when we discussed the, the one that got hit by, by a car.
Yes, so the, the company installed the shelter by the 7-Eleven, so that's
Right, okay.
West corner. And that was in their contract to install the one on the south.
Thank you.
Okay.
South?
The southeast corner of that intersection is actually outside the city limits, and and there's some concern that a bus shelter in that location without, it's in front of the U-Haul, without a clear level of, of activity on the street and that kind of thing, it might create other problems.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'm seeing no other hands. I just want to say thank you for this. It's, and it's exciting project to move forward, and I remember I really appreciate the analysis that was done by the city staff to prioritize where the bus shelters go. I think it's a great example of putting the racial equity work we talk about into practice, as well as looking at climate and ridership, and also, of course, how much things cost. So thank you so much for, for this, and I believe you're probably with us for the next purchase item, which is the street, streetscape furnishings.
I am, and this is a larger order, looking, as, as you recall, we're looking primarily at the New Hampshire Avenue furnishings. These are the colorful, in some cases even kind of whimsical, things that were installed, I think originally around 2008, and the city really hasn't done any reinvestment in those furnishings since then. We've replaced a bench that was destroyed by a car. And that's maybe the only thing that comes to mind. So over, over the time, there's a certain amount of wear and tear, and we decided it was time to go circle back and make sure that they're in good shape and that they put a, that they show that the city cares about this part of the city. And we got three bids, and the one that we wanted the most, the Victor Stanley, actually came in at the lowest. And so we're looking at replacing 20 trash cans, 20 recycle can receptacles, as well as some benches. We've been working with Public Works and with the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Association on what needs replacing first, and then if there, and if there are extras left, then where we would want to add to it. So I think in terms of this is in the budget, there's additional funds for other kinds of amen, streetscape furnishings and amenities that aren't, we have not yet come before you about spending, but we wanted to move forward on these. Again, we're hoping to get delivery by June 30th, and so we've been working with the company leaning on them a little bit, and I, they seem to think that's possible, so that's what we're aiming for. This all comes out of the, as I said, the New Hampshire Avenue branding, and it's in the Streetscape manual. I realized just before the meeting, I checked to see if we had the 2021 version of the Streetscape manual up on the public space page, and we do not yet, so I will get that posted tomorrow. We do have the earlier version. I think it's now five years out of date probably, but it does include these items.
Tripping any, Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. This is a question that actually is not directly related to the, the bus shelters or the Streetscape things, which I think are both fantastic, but as we were talking about the the manual, it reminded me of one of the public comments earlier today that was about the, the width of our sidewalks, the five, five feet versus a wider sidewalk. Is that something that is in, is there anything about sidewalk width in our Streetscape manual? I was just trying to think, think through that.
I thought Daryl was turning on her camera. She would probably be better able to. I don't think the width is in the side, the Streetscape manual. We do have others, some other specifications, like, you know, speed hump dimensions and things like that, but Daryl, do you want to speak to the width?
Sure. In our, there is nothing in a Streetscape manual with regard to sidewalk width. However, in our new sidewalk installation policy, we do have a five-foot as the goal for sidewalk width. In our ADA compliance work, given that most city sidewalks are maximum four feet, we do that four-foot width.
And many. You went out a little bit. Could you say it again?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was just going to say the, our ADA compliance process allows for a four-foot width sidewalk. When we're doing ADA repairs, we do not widen an existing sidewalk if it's four feet wide. For our new sidewalk policy, we do establish a five-foot as the minimum width. We're, we're guided by federal guidelines related to sidewalk, so we have, we have limitations, the, you can't make it any more than 36 inches wide, and that's only for pinch points, places where you can't create a wider surface, but there's definitely a goal of five-foot width sidewalks or greater. In Tacoma Park, with our limited right-of-way and narrow streets and property lines fairly close to the streets and many of the city streets, we don't have the right-of-way to extend the sidewalks beyond the existing four-foot width, but we do try to make sidewalks five-foot when we're creating new sidewalks.
Thank you. If I could just jump in, I think five feet is narrow. If you've got, if you're, you know, you're trying to walk your bike and you're trying to, you've got helping somebody or you're passing people and you got buses going right next to you on the curb, it's, it feels narrow. Part of what I think the, as we look at how do Streetscapes evolve over time, how much do we use for stormwater kind of control? How do we basically de-emphasize cars as we move forward? That's something to look at. But as Ms. Braithwaite said, we have a very constricted landmass in Tacoma Park with hills and, and the, and narrow winding roads, and so we do the best we can. I think we also do look at what are the uses alongside those sidewalks? And we, how much there's, they are walkways to schools and that kind of thing. So it's, we do the best we can at, at these discussions with that five-foot minimum where we can do.
Yeah, I know, I know this isn't the primary discussion right now, but I would love to, to have more of a discussion about kind of how we're prioritizing public space use, and when there are opportunities to reduce parking spaces where there is a chance, you know, where there isn't so much parking needed in a particular location, for example, I'd love to see more sidewalk width, because it can be really difficult passing through, especially when you're trying to social distance and other things to go through locations like that. And I was just attending a webinar, I think a week or so ago, where there was a really interesting discussion about some of the federal regulations and kind of the more pedestrian-focused streets in general, where you don't necessarily want to use the, the standard regulations of, of just moving cars through quickly, that, that, you know, that really does not serve the purposes that we want for pedestrians. So I'd love to see more of that as we kind of refer with Vision Zero and some other of the plans. I think that the parking management and open space plans as well might play into that. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Searcy?
Well, this is awesome. I know I've heard from the CDA about the, the need for, you know, more trash receptacles and things in the crossroads area, so I know that this is something that's definitely needed. Um, you mentioned that the Streetscape, you know, the benches and things had not been replaced in, since what, 2008? So what is the typical life cycle for these types of you know, public amenities like benches and trash cans and things like that?
Yeah, I guess I can, I can speak to that. We don't, we do not have a timed life cycle for those types of amenities. They tend to last a long time. I would say well over 10 years. What we have done in some cases is we replace liners, we replace lids, we even paint cans, because they are fairly expensive. It also depends quite a bit on the location, how close they are to a road that gets heavily salted. You know, those along New Hampshire Avenue, you know, get much more harder wear and tear than others and some, along some residential streets. It also has to do with how exposed they are to sun. You know, are they a shaded area? Are they blasted in the sun 24/7? So it really varies, but I, I think we've seen in the New Ha, New Ave cans, we also used a different color scheme than we've done before. And so, you know, what we've seen is that they, they definitely fade and age, and so that's part of the, part of the issue as well. We've got quite a bit of rusting and corrosion that's taken place in some of the containers, so they no longer look very attractive. I really don't represent well. So that's probably something that we should do in a more organized way, date the cans and create a replacement schedule based on a reasonable assumption. The use of these metal cans is really something that's happened in the past 15 years. I don't know if you recall, but we used to use sort of stone cans. I'm sure we used metal cans originally or wood slat side cans, and then we kind of went to the concrete stone cans, and now we've shifted to the metal can, so you know, it really depends on the type of container itself, as to how long it, it will hold up and, and continue to look attractive.
Thank you. And another thing that I know, Ms. Grisby, I've mentioned quite a bit is, you know, revisiting wayfinding signage and lots of things like that in the city, especially in light of the Purple Line, so I could imagine, you know, particularly in wards five and six, a need for directional signage, and that typically involves additional things that might go into kind of updating Streetscape plans and designs and all of those things. So you know, that's something else that I, I want to encourage us to continue to identify opportunities to, to do that. And so when we are at a point where we maybe have some external resources, grant something to, to fund that type of work, would wayfinding updates ultimately result in changes to the Streetscape manual as well? Do those things typically happen all together? I guess I'm just trying to think through the process.
When we established the Streetscape manual and we presented it to council, I think in 2016, we, the planning staff and the public works staff looked at each other and said, we need to commit to a regular update. And so we've done sort of informal notes to ourselves along the way, and ideally, really, it would be probably annually or maybe every two years where we would feed information back in if we discover that a product has been discontinued or something didn't wear well, that we would incorporate that information. For wayfinding, wayfinding signage, we actually have a wayfinding signage program tiered, and it is, it is in the manual, and we can identify new locations and add, add signage to it as you like. It's kind of based on gateway signs to the city and, you know, different sizes and types for different locations and purposes. I know the, the kiosk signs that we have, there are a couple in the Tacoma, Tacoma Langley Crossroads area, and there's a couple in the Old Tacoma area. They have a map on one side with business information, and then bulletin board on the other side, and the maps are dated the minute we put them in. As soon as we put in the print order, the maps are out of date, and so I know those need to be redone now. And we're looking at ways to make them somewhat more perennial, instead of listing every single business name, which we did intentionally as a way to help highlight businesses and help customers find what they're looking for, but some way that would, that would have a slightly longer, accurate service life, and, and so we're reexamining that one. But we can, if you have particular locations in mind, we're happy to take a look and see about installing new signage or, and we, obviously, the plan was developed before the Purple Line in construction, and so we need to reexamine that. But we can integrate changes through the, with the Streetscape manual. I don't want it in any way convey an impression that we can't do anything until the next update.
That's really helpful. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Great, seeing no other hands. This, all three of these will come back to us next week. So we will be voting on these. If you have any questions, get them in, please, by the end of the week, but otherwise they'll be part of our voting session. So thank you very much for bringing these to us. Our next work session tonight, and our final one, is continuing our budget reconciliation conversation, and I know our deputy city manager was putting together our traditional budget reconciliation chart. I don't know if we're ready to share that yet, or?
Yeah, we think, yes, we're going to have, the deputy city manager is going to kind of help oversee the, this reconciliation discussion, and, and she has been doing an enormous amount of work getting the answers to your various questions, so that we can move forward, so I think the goal for tonight is to try to get a very good list on the reconciliation chart, so that you have a good final discussion on Monday.
Great, and I don't know if we want to start with the chart, or I know there were some, some questions that were specifically asked. If people have some overarching questions left over from the budget work sessions, I know there were some questions about the street sweeper and other things, so I don't know if people want to delve in there. I see Councilmember Smith has his hand up.
I plan on adding the proposed items that I discussed a couple of months ago to broaden library services. I will add that in a separate email.
Thank you. Any, anyone else want to start somewhere, or any big picture questions before we get to the list? Well, I guess I'm curious about the street sweeper, so by the way, do you want to give us an update from what else you've learned? I know, I think Councilmember Kovar, if I'm not mistaken, had put it on the reconciliation list, but we were going back and forth, and you were going to get more information.
Yeah, we're still in the process of working. We have two vendors actually in our area that provide EV sweepers. We've now seen a demonstration of one. We're having a demonstration of the other tomorrow at 10 o'clock. And we've also been in touch with the vendor who provides the current street sweeper. One of the things that we want to do in the next iteration of our street sweeper is make sure we have a more agile sweeper. The previous time we purchased it, we went up in size, thinking that bigger was better, which is, I guess, a problem that we all fall into from time to time. What we've learned is that the sweeper size actually limits some of What we've learned is that the sweeper size actually limits some of its agility and functionality within our tiny roads and around parked cars. So we're really looking at options now for more agile sweepers where there are three wheel versions as well as a four wheel version with a much tighter, actually some turn within a 12 foot radius. Uh, so we're, we're now looking at sweepers that provide a little more dexterity in terms of how well they can operate in the roadway. We are also looking at a slightly smaller size because it will enable us to use a driver that is not a CDL licensed driver, which will greatly expand our capacity for putting a driver in the seat. Uh, currently we have, um, of course, our sanitation drivers are CDLs, but they're otherwise occupied during the day. And in our right away division, we have, uh, three staff that are CDL, actually four staff, including a supervisor that are CDL licensed. Uh, however, on any given day or week, they may be supplementing the sanitation drivers filling in, or there may be other things going on. Uh, so we have not been able to get our sweeper on the road as often as we would like. Uh, so we're looking at sweepers with a slightly smaller weight that enables us to use a CDL, a non-CDL driver, which will greatly enhance our capacity. So those are kind of the, there's several things that we're looking for in this next purchase. As I mentioned, we want a more agile sweeper. We're looking at a non-CDL sweeper. And we want to make sure that the, um, the capacity and capability of the sweeper is such that it meets all our, uh, stormwater quality. Credit criteria provides the kind of sweeping that gives us maximum credit uh, towards our water pollution reduction requirements. There are two types of sweepers. Uh, a mechanical sweeper and a regenerative air sweeper. We definitely want to have a regenerative air sweeper as they do a more efficient and more effective job at removing sediment and fines from the roadway. So those things are really driving our decisions or our recommendations in terms of of the sweeper purchase. So we're looking at equipment that could provide those capabilities. Um, we're still getting, uh, pricing, uh, to compare the diesel option, the EV option. We've also learned there is a hybrid option. Uh, so we're, um, exploring, uh, those, those possibilities. We don't have a final price yet. Um, and and unfortunately, the timeline for this is kind of conflicting with the council's budget timeline in that all this is kind of happening fairly quickly and we're, we're, you know, the status of EVs in the market is really changing, um, fairly quickly. Uh, so we're doing the best we can to try to provide information. I will probably have more information by next week. I certainly hope to have some additional quotes so we can look at the options. One of the things that Councilmember Kostic had asked is for a kind of a greenhouse gas emissions analysis. And so we haven't been able to do that yet because we haven't quite gotten uh, sufficient information from the sweeper manufacturers as to, um, you know, the capability of their equipment, but we'll worst case scenario, we'll have our best estimate of what, um, what those fuel use reduction and maintenance use reductions will mean if we go to the full EV model. Based on everything we know so far, you know, we're looking at a double in price for an EV model versus a diesel fueled model. Whether or not it makes sense for the 10 year term of this purchase to do that, I think, uh, the jury is kind of out. Uh, there's a lot of pros and cons on each side. Uh, one of which is we need to make sure the sweeper is operable as often as possible. You know, we don't want to, um, get into technology that we're not confident will, um, work, um, dependably, uh, because it is something that between March and October, we want to have that sweeper on the road as often as possible. Uh, it does us all the most benefit to have the sweeper in operation. So we want to make sure it's, uh, up and running and reliable. And we're trying to make sure we do everything we can in the procurement process to put together the best list of criteria and specifications to make sure we're, we're meeting that goal. Can't think what else I wanted to say. Um, so I hope by Monday I will have, uh, an analysis of EV versus diesel. We, we of course use the biodiesel, so it's not a straight 100% diesel. We're using 80% diesel and 20% soy in the summer months and down to 5% in the winter, uh, though of course we don't use the sweeper in the winter. So, it'll, it's a slightly improved, um, fuel use based on the biodiesel that that we currently operate with. Uh, so we'll try to do the best we can in terms of, uh, laying out those, those cost options. You know, there's a lot of competing demands, uh, for what we want the sweeper to accomplish. Um, so we'll try our best to sort of lay out the various, uh, options and pricing as we get, as we get it.
Great. And we definitely need the sweeper this year. Is that? I remember you saying that from Monday night.
Our sweeper is falling apart. Our sweeper is.
It sounds terrible when it goes by. I will say, uh, you know, you know, when it's there.
And Ms. Bray, can you just remind us the what, from what you know now, what the, the, um, the EV model may cost versus the diesel?
Sure. The one price we have got is I believe 550, uh, 526, 526,000. And I believe the price we got quoted for the standard diesel model was in the $250,000 range. So really double, double the cost. Um, that was of, um, uh, one vendor, uh, so we're, we're awaiting pricing from a second vendor, but I, I imagine it'll be fairly similar.
Could I ask one clarifying point? So I think you said, um, Ms. Braithwaite, that the costs would be divided roughly evenly and half of it would come from the stormwater budget. And the other half would be in effect additional budget spending. Is that correct? So that in other words, if we didn't do it at all, it doesn't save the entire amount, it only saves half of it. Is that a fair way to?
I think the way, uh, the way the city manager has set up the, uh, capital budget is to split the cost, the higher cost of the sweeper between the equipment replacement reserve. Because it is a, uh, vehicle replacement, which is funded, uh, through the general fund and the stormwater fund. So, um, we, we have it identified in both. Uh, because it is such a large cost, we've kind of bounced back and forth as to whether or not to charge it to stormwater or charge it to equipment replacement. Um, so I think a shared, shared cost uh, makes sense across those two funds. Uh, it certainly has an impact in the budget then available during the next fiscal year for stormwater projects because a huge chunk of it is going towards, uh, the sweeper, which, you know, does perform a stormwater related function, but doesn't get some of the, uh, infrastructure built that we'd like to have built.
At the moment, in the budget, there's no general funds going to the sweeper, correct? It's coming out of the ER and, uh, stormwater?
That's right. I mean, the ERR is part of the general fund, but it is a special, it is a special.
I just wanted to think about the reconciliation chart and how we account for it. If it goes. You're saying?
So is there, is, is the logic of that to say that if you didn't do it though, and those two funds are still funded, it doesn't change anything in the budget that?
That's, I think, correct. The, the, um, the difference is that some of the stormwater projects just don't get done.
But what would happen when the ERR funds in that case then?
If, I'm sorry, if we did not purchase the street.
Would they just be used for something else or would that?
So the, the ERR, the ERR sits there until that, uh, item is purchased and, you know, we kind of recalculate. Well, something lasted instead of 10 years, it lasted 11 years. And so, you know, we, we recognize that as we, um, correct the ERR calculations each year, but the, um, yeah, it's not, it's not a direct savings in the way of the tax, um, rate that some other items are.
That's, that's all I was saying. Like when we, when we do our chart, if, if we were to say only, you know, assume you're going to do the diesel and save the $250,000, that wouldn't be $250,000 that we would be putting back into the general fund.
Well, can I, can I just, um, having spent some time studying this and I thought that, so I'm just going to jump in because it's a question about the exact same thing. I thought in the general fund balance, I forget which page in the front, there was a $700,000 contribution for ERR. And then there was a deductions. So I was assuming that if you took something out of the ERR expenses, it would come out of that deductions line. So it would affect the general fund pretty directly. Is, why is that not right?
The ERR, uh, contribution goes towards everything within the equipment replacement reserve. So the goal is to do the year's allocation for everything that's on that list. Previously, we did not have the street sweeper listed in the ERR. Uh, so the funds, um, will have to be whenever that's replaced. If we use the ERR funds for a portion of that replacement, uh, an amount of that annual ERR, uh, contribution will need to go towards that purchase. So.
So on page 39, that's the 700,000 addition. There's also for ERR, a 1,082, et cetera, 82,000, et cetera, deletion, which is the amount of the things proposed to be spent in ERR. So assumption was if you don't buy something for $200,000 in ERR, that deletion number is smaller.
That's correct. But what it, but, but it does not change the fact that we would still be contributing the 700,000 to.
Right. Right. But it does, it, it has a direct impact, but in a different column.
It does, but because it's a it's, I think the, yes, the answer is yes, but I think it's a different impact than you think. So I'm happy to talk with you on that line about.
I just mentioned one other thing and I don't want us to get bogged down just on on this thing the whole time. But if a decision was made, and I'm not saying this is the right decision, if a decision was made to purchase the less expensive, say diesel fuel equipment and only costs half as much. So that's a 250,000 expense, the second 250,000 that never has to be made, right? So couldn't you contribute less into the ERR?
Yes.
I mean, of course you could.
So, so there's, I mean, or you could choose to, to not, to not take it out of the stormwater fund. But the, one of the points and, and, you know, one of the commenters today did note that the $700,000 contribution is on this thin side for, we don't have the exact amount known for what we should be contributing this year. Um, but, but $700,000 is on the low side of that. Um, and, you know, so it's somewhere between the 700 and the 900,000 that was mentioned. Um, so I would not want to try to deduct out of that 700,000. I really would not want to.
I mean, to me, if you're not, if the decision is made not to purchase something that costs that much money, then you can deduct that amount. I'm just going to say that's, that'll be.
Well, then, I guess Councilmember Kovar, what I would say is I want to make sure it's clear on the reconciliation then. If you are going to put forward to, to do the lesser amount for the sweet street sweeper, that you're also doing less of a contribution to the ERR.
Well, I'd like to hear more about from Public Works on the questions that they're looking into before I decide. I just want to understand.
Right. No, but I'm just saying that's the, that's, that's the decision.
But again, as, as, as Ms. Braithwaite mentioned, that $700,000 goes to 30 or 50 items. And so you would be hurting a variety of items, um, that that we would be normally contributing to. So.
There's different ways of looking at a budget question like that. What I'm saying is I'd like to understand a little bit more from Public Works before Monday, if that, if we are able to, what we're talking about and then we can decide.
Great.
I would also say that, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that you could also not take that contribution, uh, not take that expenditure, should we choose to go diesel from the stormwater fund. And then you could reestablish the projects that were listed in the original CIP prior to adding that additional cost to the stormwater fund. We also have the stormwater balance that's negative as a result of the expenditures. So uh, another outcome would be that the stormwater fund would be more solvent and not be in, uh, negative status uh, going into the next year.
That's right. We do have a, we do have $65,000 coming from the general fund to the stormwater fund this, this year planned.
So.
Councilwoman, did you have any?
Yeah, thank you. So another possibility and the, and, and whether it, whether it shows up as a deletion to the total deductions from the general fund or it shows up somewhere else. But another possibility is that Ms. Braithwaite had meant, mentioned a couple of pieces of equipment that could be delayed. Um, that happened to be, for example, the loader about 200,000 bucks, which is about the difference that we're talking about. So forgetting for a moment where it gets accounted for on the reconciliation list and whether it affects the calculations about the property text, forgetting that for a moment, another way to do this is to say $200,000 less for those big pieces of equipment. If the, if the, don't put the pressure on the staff to get answers by, by next Monday. Um, if the if the street sweeper looks like the best deal as, as, uh, is a, is a, an electric sweeper, then great. Um, and then not get the loader. So something.
Well, I guess the question, I, I guess I would just say though, like, we have to remember there's a reason we have the equipment. So that we're not making these kind of decisions that it is something that, you know, Daryl has the formula for. We're looking at long-term spreading things out because as Councilmember Siemens recalls, when we didn't have the ERR, we got into a lot of trouble in the city. Um, and so the, the idea of establishing this reserve is not, is exactly not doing that type of calculation because we want to be on a schedule for when we're replacing, um, this, these kind of.
Right. I'm just follow, I'm just following up on something that, that got us last week as another way to, again, not put the pressure on. Have to settle this by Monday. Do research that you may not be able to do by Monday. So that's, that was why I brought up.
Ms. Searcy?
So I did have a question. Can we change topics?
Um, well, Councilwoman Searcy had her hand up. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we change topics.
Thanks. I, um, and I guess I, I don't want to repeat what the mayor just said. I think one of the things when we're talking about the ERR, that's important for me and my brain to kind of wrap around things is to keep in mind that we're not going to find ourselves in a situation where we don't need a street sweeper, right? So basically what you're doing is delaying the inevitable replacement. You're not necessarily saving money because you're going to have to buy a street sweeper, whether it's today, whether it's tomorrow, whether it's next year. So, you know, some, for, for me, I guess, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, um, you know, the concern about the delay, like in my mind, the delay and even if it is pulling funds into another reserve or however people want to do the, the wonky math on the backend, it's, it's still delaying the inevitable and you may actually have higher costs as a result of that delay because you may not have those funds available in reserve at the time in which you need to do the replacement to easily make the replacement. So I, I just want to make sure, you know, that I understand that I'm thinking about this, right? That I'm not missing something. Um, you know, Daryl, if that's something, am I thinking about this, right? Because I, I, I feel like we're constantly, when it comes to equipment replacement, kind of doing, doing this thing. And, and I kind of like to think of it as my, in my house, for example, you may be told you need to replace your HVAC. And you know, you need to replace your HVAC. And they may say, oh, you can, it can last a year. And you may say, okay, I'm going to put it off. That doesn't mean it lasts a year. It means it could break down tomorrow and then you have to replace it. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I'm thinking about the budgeting of the equipment correctly. So I just feel like we have this conversation a lot when it comes to equipment.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it is a hard concept to, um, understand and then and then consistently apply. Um, I hope, I have an example here and I hope it doesn't add more confusion, but for instance, the loader discussion. If the council were to choose to delay the loader for another year, you're not saving. If the council were to choose to delay the loader for another year, you're not saving that money. Um, the contribution to the E R R, our loader lasts for 10 years. It would be ten, it would be one tenth of the contribution that would be, should have been made towards the loader. So you wouldn't be saving the entire loader cost amount in any given year. You'd be saving one tenth of what we should have allocated towards it. And so you still need to allocate that um annual contribution towards the replacement of the piece of equipment over time. You just need to envision it for the life of the equipment, and then assume that you're gonna be every year putting that year's contribution in so that when you get to the replacement year, you have the funds available to do it. So it's sort of artificial to think of a savings as the total cost amount because we've been putting money into the E R R for that replacement based on the annual allocation over time. And thankfully, the council has been making those annual allocations for the past few years. We went through many, many years where no annual allocations were made, and that really screwed up uh, the, the whole process because then what you had were unfunded items that were, when they needed to be purchased, we had to deduct the entire amount from the, the fund balance. So it, it, it defeated the purpose of that planned and scheduled and annually allocated contribution. Um, so I just, perhaps that will help uh, think about it. It's, it's not the full cost, that's the savings. You're only saving that annual allocation towards that piece of equipment.
And just as a, just as a, a piece of information, when I was the first uh, acting city manager and had to face my first kind of being in charge of a budget, uh, we were so far behind on the, yeah, on the E R R contributions that 1.3 million dollars had to go into it that year, which was stunning. And that's just not, so what we're trying to do is get to something that's sustainable, that's somewhere in this $700,000 every year, maybe $800,000 every year. But so that you're always putting in about the same amount of money to be able to fund these costs that go up and down based on the size of the equipment. Um, and so that's, that's the goal, is to have in a small community uh, with a small budget, to have some, a, a pretty standard amount that goes towards that, that equipment every year. So that's the goal. Thank you, that, that was really helpful. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're gonna record um Daryl saying that, so we can like have a 30-second snippet every year. Thanks there. Uh, Councilwoman Kovar, did you have more on this topic before we moved?
This will be the last thing, just to be clear, not about the loader, but why we're having this discussion at all is because this was presented as something that was so big, it was outside the, the way the normal process worked. And it was presented as something where we weren't even sure the technology existed right for it, and we weren't sure if we're gonna be, gonna be ready. So this is not something where we're just sort of sitting here thinking, oh, let's just come up with a thing and not delay. It was presented as being too big to fit into the regular thing. An extraordinary expense that went outside either E R R or stormwater to be able to pay for it, and considerable doubt expressed as to whether the technology even made sense. So the argument that was just presented is fine, that doesn't apply exactly to how this was given to us in the context of the budget role. Now just stop there, I don't want to lose.
But that's, that's correct, because it's not, it's not similar to the cost in past years.
Right, but that's, that's why we're having this conversation. And, you know, it's, it's not just, oh, we're gonna bust the E R R, whatever. That, that was what we were told, and that's why I raised the questions that I raised, just to be clear.
Thank you. I think there was a good questions, and that's why we wanted to clarify them tonight before going into final reconciliation on Monday. All right, so I think we have enough on the street sweeper, and hopefully we'll get more information. Um, and even if there's just a little information we could have, because as we know, the weekend before the Monday of reconciliation, there's a lot of work council does. So even if it's, it's not 100% complete information, a bit more as we're making decisions this weekend would be really helpful. Um, okay, Councilwoman Dovall, next topic.
Yes, thank you. So um, I, I asked this in the written questions, and I am sorry that I just still don't quite get it. So on the Stormwater Management Fund, we altered the structure of the fees. Um, the fees are still gonna add up to 700,000 the first year, which is the year we're going into. It'll be a little short, not a lot, just a little bit. Um, okay, great. But when I look at the Stormwater Management Fund summary in the front, and when I look at the Stormwater Management Budget in the back, the expenditures are significantly more. And is that because you really do expect $200,000 of carryover? Or am I reading this wrong?
Which pages are you looking at?
Well, right at the moment, I'm looking at page forty-nine. But the Stormwater Management Fund Summary in Detail is on page two fifty-three, where it breaks down the staff and the supplies and what comes out of the capital fund and all of that. So it, it's, and obviously I must be misunderstanding something. It says total expenditures, $908,000. So that's quite a bit more than 700. So I'm just trying to figure out for myself.
So there was money in the, there was money in the account. There was um the, the total, and, and you know, a lot of this is the the cost of the, with that um street sweeper.
So it's not, the difference is not the so, so, so this year is particularly high because of the street sweeper?
Correct.
If we didn't have the sweet sweeper, it would come out to about two, 700,000, give or take, which is what
Right.
Told everybody. Okay. And then the way that we're gonna make this up is 200,000 from the general fund?
No, so someone's in the, someone's in the fund already. So there was, there was fund left over from, you know, there was some money in the fund already. And then we would be transferring over $65,000 from the general fund.
Okay.
I think that is based on some assumed expenditures about projects to be completed in twenty-one. There may be some slippage, and we may not get some of the projects finished. We're presenting it kind of worst case, or best case scenario, we get all the projects done that we intend to in FY twenty-one. We spend all that money. We may end up in a situation where we are not able to complete all the projects we intended. So we'll then, in a first budget amendment, ask for those funds to be carried over to twenty-two so we can complete the projects that we intended to complete in twenty-one. So that's part of uh the, the numbers as well, where in, between twenty and twenty-one, funds were carried over from one year to the other. And we're assuming full expenditures at the end of this fiscal year, but we may not be able to complete particularly the Tacoma Branch Project in the current fiscal year.
But if we, if we were to complete what we said we were going to complete, then, then if you see what the projected uh balance for the end of FY twenty-one is, is $161,000 in the stormwater fund. Um, you add the $700,000 in stormwater fee information, and then the $65,000 from the general fund, you subtract out the $908,000 of expenditures, and uh you end up with a balance of about 23,000. So it's, that's, that's what that page of four, on page forty-nine is representing.
Okay, and then the 65,000, I, I know you've said this, but say, do me a favor and say it again. The 65,000 dollars from the general fund is not the money for, that's not the cap, because the cap is.
That's a very small amount. The, this is, so last, it, for FY twenty-one, we were, we needed another $50,000 because we delayed doing the true tiered system till this year. We did the commercial part, but we didn't do the other part. And so, um, or we, we calculated it that way. So uh, we, we had talked last budget season about transferring $50,000, and we didn't. The choice was not to, but, but we need the money. And so this year, it's, we need to have it. So we identified 65,000 as the contribution from the general fund so that the stormwater fund does not go low in this unusual year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, I have a couple of other things. Um, I, I have a number of questions that I sent earlier and some thoughts on the, on the police budget. But before getting into that, I wanted to um add one thing to the reconciliation list um, and then ask a, a separate question. Um, for the reconciliation list, I'd like to add, and I'm not entirely sure if this is the correct number, so I'd be curious if staff have any thoughts on this um between now and the reconciliation discussion on Monday. But add 5,000 for um the plaque that we discussed previously um, putting at Heffner Community Center. Um, it was a, a previous, previous budget, I think, last year, um, as well as to replace the um park sign at Jackson Boyd Park as we rename that park.
So we can, we could get some estimates for those.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then I have a question about the atrium expenditures. And I had sent a question before um about that. And it sounds like there, there's a portion of the funds that would come out of this year's um budget, and then it anticipated 600,000 for next year. Um, it's unclear to me where that, that's anticipated to come from, since the, the facilities maintenance reserve would be reduced then. And I, I know the mayor also sent a question about this as well.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on what you're anticipating for that?
So we, I actually had a, a couple of conversations, and so the way that this has been laid out is that we would use facility maintenance reserve funds this year, and then it would have to be general funds next year. So that would be a large amount of 600,000. The way that we're looking at the atrium project is that it wouldn't start until late into the fiscal year. Um, just the nature of, of our capacity to do these projects and, and all of the other kinds of things. Um, one of the options that you may want to consider is to go ahead and, and, you know, can leave it in the budget, but have a check-in point once we have more information. So can the ARPA funds help reduce some of the other kinds of expenditures, capital expenditures that, um, you know, we would be facing, that would allow us the freedom to have more general funds available for the atrium fill-in? Um, or uh tax duplication or some of these other kinds of things. So in one sense, it almost functions in a whole category because it, it wouldn't start till later in the year. The um the other portion, the other component of this, and it is that we have been wanting to do this atrium project for a long time. And as we are talking about reimagining public safety, how do we really keep our, uh, especially our dispatch staff um in, in comfortable in, in a space that's conducive to working? It is a big issue that we actually get this addressed. It's expensive. And so I think it is going to be a discussion about the timing of it and how it works. But I strongly encourage it to be at least kept on the table um, and have a, have, as you know, more information about the larger sums of money and how they may be able to be used to have that discussion a few months into this fiscal year, because we just don't know at the moment.
Yeah, I, I was thinking of possibly suggesting we put that on the hold list. So if we could um add that, in some, whatever capacity needs to be added to the reconciliation list, to consider that as a whole, I'd like to do that. Um, I have a couple of, of thoughts and questions related to police, but I see that Councilmember Siemens has his hand up on this, so if it's on this, I'll.
Yeah, if people have other questions on the atrium, maybe we should do that now before we head into police. Councilmember Siemens or C R C, where, where your hands up on atrium?
Yes, I was, uh, I just wanted to add to what the city manager had said is, you know, this certainly was not done just for city dispatchers. Uh, it was a, a desire for um making better utilization of the space in the basement. But uh, there was also a big factor that, that uh, there was a lot of noise passing between floors that was affecting employees uh both in the basement and, and the other levels as far up as, as the uh, the second floor and the administrative offices. It's been an ongoing problem since uh the, the community center redesign. It was uh, again, a nice design in theory, but there were a lot of problems and complications uh with operations caused by the noise. And I just wanted to point that out.
Councilwoman Yersey?
So um when it comes to the atrium, one of the things that, that kind of gives me pause is, is capacity. I, we have a lot of large projects um that are slated to kick off um next year, you know, next fiscal year. And I mean, if, if you're talking about the library and you're adding the atrium, and there's supposed to be design work starting to happen with both, I just, I'm really concerned about capacity um to actually um make some, make some headway on the atrium during FY twenty-two. And I also wonder about um whether or not some of those other funds that might be made available um could put us in a position where we don't have to, to phase this out the way in which we're currently proposing. And I also want to stress that um putting something on hold still includes it in the tax rate. So we have to keep that in mind as well. Putting something on hold doesn't mean that you don't budget for it. You still have to budget for it in case we take it off. So if we don't have, or if we're questioning our capacity to start this work in FY twenty-two, again, I think there's value there. I think there's definitely um uh arguments to be made linking some of this to COVID infrastructure changes. Um, staff that are working in the basement are in some really tight quarters. Um, and so I, I do think, depending on how some of this ARPA money and what may be approved, we may be able to make a reasonable argument for, you know, using some of those funds to help support some of this um, you know, public safety reimagining stuff, yes, but also just, you know, OSHA, COVID, bringing people back to work in a safe way kind of thing. Um, so, so that's my two cents on that. Um, I don't know if that means officially saying, I guess I should, so we can talk about it. Um, putting the atrium, um, and I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on which stage of the, but where, what page we're on, whether or not the atrium construction needs to be pushed out to FY twenty-three.
Right, so it, that it's part of the capital budget. And so the, the, um, you, you certainly could do that. You could push it out to FY twenty-three, you, then it would not be in the tax rate. Uh, that, that 200,000 would not be a component of the tax rate in FY twenty-two. Um, it, you have the opportunity always, because it's pretty much designed, we've done a lot of work on it already. Um, we would have the opportunity of grant funds came forward or some other kind of thing to move it quick, more quickly. Ms. Braithwaite, do you want to address the, how the timing might work?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, we do have 100% complete design. We had already um gone through a procurement process with um a source well kind of um type of project. So the, the project is fully designed. We've gone through all the communication and discussion with the police department and our architects. So it's really just been sitting on a shelf, waiting to go out to bid. Uh, we'll probably need to blow the dust off uh before we go out to bid, make sure there's no new technology changes that have happened in that year, year and a half since it's been finalized. So this is actually um a pretty impactful and not very complicated um project. Uh, so we'll go out to bid, it will be under construction. We'll need to relocate the dispatch while the construction's taking place. Uh, one thing that the council may benefit from, and we hadn't done it before, is to just walk you through the plans. Uh, because what you'll see is a much improved public access to the police department, a much improved uh view and ability, like right now, you walk up to dispatch, you can't see anybody. It's like you're talking to nobody. Uh, so it'll just totally improve the experience of people walking into the lobby. It reduces. It reduces the size of the lobby and expands the size of the dispatch place. It provides a way for a customer to come into the lobby and want to meet with the police and be escorted into the facility, whereas now you have to kind of go around and out. So it'll be a way for police officers or police administrative staff to meet people in the lobby and bring them in.
It also gives some, it also gives some privacy for, right, it also gives some privacy for the customers who may be discussing a private matter with dispatch.
I agree with the need. Be helpful to see the design again. I question the timing.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So I fully understand that. I'm just, you know, I never wanted to say, oh, yeah, we can do it, no problem. But we do have it fully designed. It does need to go out to bid. It's a fairly straightforward project. So, you know, it should be able to be managed within our existing staff structure in terms of our construction manager. And, and that is the way we would assume to be able to oversee it between the facility maintenance supervisor and the construction manager with an, with an outside contractor doing the work and the relocation of dispatch.
If I can ask the W C manager, I know as you're creating the reconciliation list, we had certain tabs last year on hold and other things that maybe just so that we keep track of these things, we have like an ARPA tab. So, and I'm not saying this is where the council is going, but if the council did decide to not keep it in the budget on a hold list, but to say it goes in the, if, if we can use ARPA funds, then we do it, but if not, then it gets pushed out or something like that. Because I think there's like three options. It's like, keep it in, do it as we're, as we're talking, put it on a hold list, but it stays in the budget, or put it on a list that says, if we can use ARPA funds, then we do it, is what I'm hearing from council, as, as three possibilities, unless Councilwoman Kostic has a fourth.
No, no, but I wanted to note that I don't believe in the budget there is any contribution to the facilities maintenance reserves. So I don't anticipate that this would actually impact the tax rate, whether or not we do it this year.
Well, that's true. It's, it's, it would be from the facility maintenance reserve. So yes, it would not affect the tax rate. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. That's very important. So even if we decided to, it doesn't matter.
But it wouldn't affect this tax rate, but it, we would automatically, if we cannot use the ARPA funds, be committing ourselves to spending the rest of the balance out of the general fund for the next budget.
Right. But that's a good reason, we just put, we don't have to make it so complicated. Maybe it's on the hold with an asterix to check the ARPA funds, but it's important as we do this that we realize, yeah, what's going to impact the tax rate. So thank you, Councilwoman Kostic. Are we done with the atrium? Okay, police.
All right, I'll, I'll start off. I sent a number of questions that I don't know if you've had a chance to dig into that at all yet. But as I said in my email when I sent them, I am concerned about the proposed 7% increase for the police departments, especially as we're making the shift towards reimagining public safety. And I know the timing is very frustrating with regard to the recommendations from the task force. So I feel like it's difficult to make some substantive shifts or really necessarily know exactly how to do that in the best degree until we get those recommendations. But I do think having that increase is concerning, and I'd like to see how we could get to a reduction or a status quo flat rate.
I'm not thinking about it.
So, I'm sorry. So I had a question about that. Councilmember Siemens, I think you're unmuted. So I had a question about that, and if there are thoughts on that, I would love to hear those. And, and then I had sent a number of questions specifically about overtime and some of the shifting of positions as well. So I'll just kind of pause there and see if you have any information on that. Yeah, so Councilwoman Kostic, we are working through that. Our human resources director is digging into that. As we discussed a little bit on Monday, I did just want to reiterate that the operating portion of the police department budget did decrease by 5%. So what we're talking about with the increase are personnel expenditures primarily fringe. And you know, what goes into fringe, you've got the police retirement contributions are budgeted under fringe. You also have health insurance, life insurance, social security, dental, vision, Medicare, and there's different factors that we apply to calculate all of those. So we're going back to, you know, double check and make sure there was nothing off in kind of our formulas for calculating those. But, you know, with a fully staffed department, to reduce a fringe benefit amount would be to be reducing personnel would seem to be implied. But we are double checking, you know, our human resources director did budget very conservatively. So for example, the contribution for the pension fund is budgeted at 45%. The actual recommendation from our actuary was 43.6%. So there might be, you know, a little slight reduction there, although it's good to budget conservatively there, particularly because we're making some changes to that pension plan with the drop. So we're looking at it, and we'll get you that information in detail. You asked some very detailed questions, and we'll, we'll respond to that and get you more information prior to Monday, and we're happy to review that on Monday as well. Yeah, thank you. As I was looking through it, there were some, some things that seemed strange in terms of the fringe going up significantly by 45% in one division, even though there was a loss of a position in that division. And then there was a shift of five of the positions out of operations, I think it was. But then there was still an increase in personnel expenses. So it seemed quite odd in terms of how that played out, and I would have anticipated there to be some type of reduction in those other places to kind of offset it. So I guess in terms of that, we'll wait for the answers on specific fringe information. For overtime, it looks like sort of an across-the-board increase in overtime by about 11%.
So I can speak to the overtime, I think. And again, we're, we're like, the W C manager mentioned, we're looking through really carefully all the different numbers. But if you remember in FY21, we cut overtime costs out of the budget for the police because we knew there wasn't going to be some of the events that they go to, there wasn't going to be court cases, of course, overtime. And so that was one of the things that, so if you're trying to compare from what we, you know, a lower amount to what we're expecting with more normal operations, that's part of the explanation. What actually happened, though, was that even though we were in the pandemic, we had a lot of overtime spent on protection of some of our residents that are prominent. And, and so different activities actually came out. So what was actually spent was more than what we, the reduced budget for FY21. So part of this is just the nature of the cuts that we made in advance for FY21 compared to what we're hoping is a more normal year for FY22. So that, I think, explains some of the difference in the, in the overtime budget.
I appreciate that. I was looking through, and I don't have a, I can't seem to find the exact page right now. But it did look like the amount was compared, the 11% was compared to the adjusted for this year. So it was 11% more than the adjusted for this year, which I think was more than the previous year, if I remember correctly, but I might be incorrect on that. So I guess it seems like a significant increase, considering the last year was fairly odd. Yes, we didn't have some of the public events, but we did have some of these other aspects that were happening.
So we'll, we'll, as I said, we're providing that information. We'll have that for you.
I guess going towards your point on, and I sent this question as well, on staff and personnel expenditures, is there a sense of how many vacancies there might be anticipated during the year? I mean, I know there is typically some turnover of newer officers. And I'm wondering if there might be some, some sense that we, we could sort of leave some potential vacancies open as we consider further further changes to public safety and kind of sort that out in the coming year.
I think it's a little tough in a relatively small organization to budget for that. Very large organizations like every county police or just any other large organization. I'm sorry, not, maybe my house is getting tired. Now I lost my train of thought. It's, it's hard for us to really estimate in a small organization. It's hard to estimate how much lapse there would be from a vacant position and what that, how that would count. It's more a policy discussion than a money one.
Yeah, I mean, it is a young department. I mean, over half of the staff were hired and have only been hired over the last three years. So because it is a young department, you know, it makes it hard to predict the vacancies. I think if you're thinking along the lines of being able to freeze positions in the near future, I don't know if that's, I think that was the line you're questioning. Yeah, thank you. I understand it's hard, hard to predict, and with a relatively smart, small number, it can be difficult. You know, you could have one person leave, and that's a significant portion of your total, or not, and that's a significant change from that, that can be hard to predict. I feel like I'm, it's hard to identify specific places within the budget not having some of those task force recommendations, frankly, because I know we want to supplement, and that's what I foresee in the future in terms of adding those mental health services and social services. But I do think our anticipation has been, or at least my anticipation has been all along, that there is some shifting in how things are done and some change in how we address things that would no longer be addressed as a police function and that would be a mental health or social service function. So I do think that is something we should be preparing ourselves for and that we, that we should not be increasing particularly a 7%, mostly personnel increase when we're looking at, you know, an ECI and a cost of living level that's significantly lower than that. So I'd appreciate information about where that's coming from, I guess, specifically, and why, why that's happening and where reductions could be made in that, as well as in, in other areas. I support the proposal Councilmember C R C's made last session to, to propose removing the K-9 unit, and I'd be curious to see how much that would reduce. I would also like us to look at shifting the neighborhood services division and possibly the crossing guards out of the police division. I know that exactly where they end up, we may not know at this point. And so I wondered if there might be some form of shifting them out in sort of a holding category within the budget as we sort of determine that. I could see, especially neighborhood services, I could see a good fit in HCD, but I could also see it potentially in public works. Sustainability.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kostic. I mean, part of the reason that neighborhood services was moved to police was because of the ability to share kind of higher-level management that could oversee that unit. So one of the things that also we'll need to look at very carefully is if there would need to be some kind of additional management position to oversee if you, if you move a unit out, because we're so, because of the size of the other units and their capacity to take in more staff. So part of it would be a fairly significant discussion, I think. I do feel that that may be one of those things that you could put as a, a direction that the council indicates wants to go in the next city manager and in talking with the various departments and thinking about how the various departments function might be able to be part of that conversation.
Yeah, I think I would like to see, I would like to see some indication in this budget that we are intending to do that. And I understand there are questions about how that's overseen and what, what exactly that looks like, and we're not going to figure that out between now and Monday. And we should, we should take a good amount of time to figure out how we want to change code enforcement and how we want to change the, the structure as well. I know we started the code enforcement discussion in terms of what we want to, you know, focus on, and if there are things we, we maybe are enforcing now that we do or don't want to enforce in the future. But I would like to indicate that to some extent in this budget, to the extent that we can. And I think I, you know, as I said, I think that 7%, I don't know what to add to the reconciliation list. Would I like to add that 7%, 7%, some level of that 7% increase as, as we get the more information to reduce that and look for some of these other shifts to make those changes? Because I, I know we have to go through a process, and I know we're close, but it is frustrating to be, you know, almost a year out in terms of our commitment to this and still not really have the capacity to make the changes in the budget now.
Man, one of the other things to, I appreciate that the police is a, is a department that's a subject of a lot of attention, and it has a fairly large amount of money that's associated with it. Other, some other departments also had some large increases and fringes and those kinds of things. So part of this is, you know, I think we do have to identify for you how that came about, but just because it says 7% in, in the police department does not mean it's extra money that is easily taken away. So I think we do need to be really clear about how those policies for how we assign health insurance costs and those kinds of things are clear. If there was some kind of a calculation that can be refined, we need to get that to you as quickly as possible. So that's what we're looking at. I, I also do think that there's a lot of interest in many of these other aspects of public safety in terms of mental health support, that I think there's real shared support all around, that we want to see that. And, and so I don't, I, I think that there's money that does have to be allocated to that. When I put forward the proposed budget before you, it is as maintenance of effort as possible, knowing that we wanted to hear from you and from the task force and others about where to go from here. So some of the things that might have otherwise been increased, we did not put forward. Some things that we might have changed, I mean, I can't even, I don't even know what those are. I tried to give as base of a budget as possible, which is why it's tough to cut. And so I just appreciate how difficult it is for you as you're looking for ways to try to match that goal, given that we just worked on such a base budget. So I appreciate how difficult this is. I'd love to find some ways to work with you to try to advance your goals.
Councilmember Kova.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate Councilmember Kostic mentioning all those things because the, the points that she raised, that she has raised are in line with what I was talking about in the previous session about whether, and really, this is a timing question. We, we have the task force recommendations not coming out prior to our vote, but probably coming out before the end of the fiscal year, which is why I suggested potentially putting some of the funding on hold. I think there are three questions I would have, getting the difference between the two percentages that the deputy city manager mentioned on the pension contribution, because typically what we've done is to have the number that's the recommended actuarial, not men to decide potentially if we wanted to do more or not. So that would be, it would be good to have that. That's one. And the, the overtime thing, it does sound as if, for a lot of departments, the overtime would have been down last year, but it does feel like the overtime was up, at least for the beginning of the pandemic. So that number seems, seemed surprising to me. The only other question I had was the positions that are shifted from operations into investigations. So what's the background to that plan? And does moving staff from one to the other change their pay?
There's no change in pay. It's, it's simply identifying, when we were short-staffed, we moved some of the investigators into patrol. That's, it does not change the, the pay for any of the officers.
So it's people who now can.
It's just, it's moving.
We have more regular.
It's moving people from one division to the other to, so that we're, we're recognizing that we're staffed to have the the minimum number of patrol officers in the right place. The minimum number of patrol officers um in the right place.
Councilwoman Cersei. I think, yeah.
Great. Um, thank you so much. Uh, so one question I have. And, and I did notice that that seven percent was, give or take, pretty consistent across other departments. So um, and, and I know, what I know from HR stuff is, you know, the cost of fringe benefits are going up, right? COVID has had an impact on health insurance. It's the truth. Um, so I, I, I would be interested in understanding for sure. Like that that seven percent is based on those rising labor costs, which we know is happening. Um, as well as how union negotiations play. I know sometimes we have a tendency to, to budget um a little higher in terms of some of the labor costs. Because, you know, union negotiations hadn't completed um prior to the finalization or the prep for budget. And so I don't know if I'm, I'm miss thinking about how we had to budget for the police budget in union negotiations. But it would be helpful to hear about that as, as well.
I, that information needs to come to you um in a different way.
A different way. Yep, that's fine. Um, so, so that is just something that's often helped me to keep in mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before we know what actuals will be. Um, and so I know that. Um, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of folks that are really interested in, you know, and I am too. I'm invested in the public safety task force. Like, I'm there. Um, but I also think it's important for us to kind of think through. Um, realistic phased approach towards implementation. There's a lot of cities that are taking various models for addressing public safety. Some are just doing blanket cuts without knowing what potential replacements might be. Um, some are taking an approach where they're actually thinking about different programs. Um, and that might mean a reduction in the police department. Um, that might mean some other things. Um, one of the things that I do think will be important for us, um, in my mind, is to see FY twenty-two as a, as a transition year. It's the year where we trust us. And that trying stuff may mean leveraging some of the monies. That we might get approved for the implementation of a public safety task force dollars. And then allocate those dollars for something like um crisis intervention pilot. Where, you know, we take some money and we invest in coming up with a, a, a trial model that we might be able to do in terms of crisis intervention. Or we do a pilot where maybe we work with some external um org folks to come in. And kind of really help us and help staff with thinking through how to reconfigure their work functions enough. So some of the things that we're talking about in terms of who would manage who, sometimes you can't figure it out. Because you're stuck in how you've always organized, organized yourself structurally. And sometimes having someone else come in to think about, well, you do this and you do this, we can move this function. Um, could help. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm, 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 I'm not as obsessed with that seven percent. Um, because I do think as long as we have some money in our pockets and really commit to using FY twenty-two. Um, to come up with approaches that we can implement. Then come FY twenty-three, we might be in a more clear place of knowing where to reallocate people. And how and what cuts might be. Um, it'll also give us a little bit more time, as I see it. Um, to see what's happening at the state level in terms of things that are happening and what may be happening in the county as well. So I, I, I understand the urgency, um, but I do think it's important for us to, to try to think of this year as that pilot phase. To really try some things so that we can come up with a model that could have some, some implementation lasting power. Um, so, so I, that's just my two cents on, on that.
And, and Councilmember Cersei, to, to that point, um, the federal funds that are coming through. Um, have a lot of money towards mental health, uh, shared uh services, a variety of those kinds of things. And I know um, the, you know, we anticipate thinking that some of those funds, would we go for that? Um, the county's thinking that, the state, I think, is thinking that as well. Um, so, you know, I, we don't know exactly the parameters around it with the final Treasury Department. Um, direction, but there are mental health and how to respond in crisis types of situations. Is mentioned several places in that document, not just in the state and local government. So I think that there's going to be, it's how do we, it's, it's how do, it's how do we um craft it? So it's appropriate for Tacoma Park. And, and how do we, you know, whether it's ARPA funds or somebody else's funds for those kinds of services. Um, I think there's an enormous amount of interest in that and, and flexibility to be able to, to fund it. Uh, so we just don't know it yet. We just don't know exactly the, that model. And that's part of what I really hope we get out of the task force is some help direction and, and what that model is. And, and then I think the funds are available for those components.
Yeah. And I also think one thing that's important for us to think about is our reimbursement structure with the county for police services. And, you know, getting rid of police right now under our current reimbursement structure, quite frankly. It, it's not a, a one-to-one. It's not, you lose a cop, you gain another FTE because of how the county reimbursement works for that cop. So it might mean having some hard conversations with the county to say, hey, maybe we need to rethink how. Well, first, we need tax duplication things, but that's another question for another day. But let's talk about the reimbursement structure for policing. Can we include social workers and mental health providers as part of this reimbursement structure?
Right.
And just, we get reimbursed for cops, but we get reimbursed for public safety functions more broadly.
Right. And so providing the um proposal that is, is kind of being discussed about how to. Handle municipal tax duplication, the, the resolutions that will even be discussed on Friday at the county. Um, part of it is a code, is, is it a commitment by the county? Hopefully they adopt this, a commitment by the county to come up with police rebate formulas that are up to date. By this October. And so the idea would be that over the next several months, it would be what would. And generally, it's kind of what would the county do? And the model now is to have those other shared services, that broader view of public safety. So how do we work on that and have that rebate be this, this differing version? Because in time, in place after place, that's clearly a more healthy version for, for public safety. To have that, that joint um model than, than the current arrangement. Um, it's also maybe useful to have that discussion with the state. Because there's state police aid that is very much kind of, how many officers do you have? And you get like a certain formula for that. That also, just hearing you talk about it, you know, it makes me think that we need to also have that discussion. With the state and try to get that formula changed.
But be clear, we still won't get our fair share.
I work at, I'm getting a fair share.
Great. Um, okay, next, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, I just want to associate myself with um Councilmember Acustic's com- comments about moving Neighborhood Services. Out of the police department. Uh, I would like to see that happen sooner than later. And also combine that with mental health professionals. And consider moving the uh victim uh witness assistant. Or uh, I, I don't know her exact title, but, but move that position also out of the police department. And, and combine that into another department that works primarily with um housing and, and community development.
Councilman Acustic.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one more thing I forgot to, to ask before, which was, um, I was curious if we could get some sort of. Um, estimate on what um additional speed camera, uh, maybe movable speed cameras. Might cost as sort of a replacement for traffic enforcement functions. And I know um, that may not actually result in any reductions in um personnel costs. Or other costs because of the way that we're structured. I know we don't have such a big organization where we have people whose whole job it is just to set up traffic patrol. Um, but I'm curious what, um, what it would cost for that as, as a possible replacement for some traffic enforcement. And if that would have any offset in terms of savings for other things.
So Councilmember Acustic, well, we've got some of those answers. Um, there are state regs about where you can have speed cameras and not uh that, that limit. So I don't think we have a lot of extras, actual place within the criteria to put them. But one of the things that we would love to investigate are things like the stop, like stop sign cameras. Or some of these other kinds of things that again are, don't require actual officers to do some of those. That kind of work. So love to explore what we can on the speed cameras. Because we do think they're very helpful at reducing accidents and, and um. And, and handling things in a, in a benign way, right? Um, but there also may be some other technological um options for, for advancing those same kinds of. Um, um, activities that don't require staff.
Yeah, I've, I've always been told, and I'm not sure whether it's true actually, but it was always my understanding. That the stop sign cameras were not allowed based on state law.
Yes, but there's, there's been some change in those discussions. So it may take some, it may take some lobbying.
Thank you.
Great. Um, just to round out the police stuff, I just, um, I, I want to see sometimes we like bury information. Um, that the fact that the operating costs are five percent lower um in the police department this year. I, and that we, we hadn't really highlighted that. Um, and um, I think I would be concerned with. Trying to cut in some way the seven percent um increase in fringe, um particularly if that's not. If it's, if it's, if it's pretty much in line with the rest of our departments, I don't want to be penalizing our police officers. Or those who work in our um police department. Um, so I'm looking forward to getting more information on the um fringe. And um, I just want to say, um, I agree with um, uh, Councilmember Cersei. That, that I, I do see this as kind of like a transition year. Um, I think we all had hoped that the um. The uh public safety uh task force would have more information at this time, but they are doing some great work. Um, and I think we also um have to acknowledge that, um, given events in our own community. And around the country that, you know, this is really tough work that they're doing. And there's a lot to consider. Um, there's a lot of changes happening at the county level and the state level. And um, so I'm, I want to put in place um and agree with um adding some money to um. That on the reconciliation list to give some flexibility, um, just in case there are things we want to do that aren't covered by ARPA funds. Um, but I also want to, you know, think really carefully about what, how we're treating our police department this year. Um, and how we are also um going to be relying on the information we get from the task force um to make some informed decisions. Um, and not to try and make, I don't know, rush decisions in the next um week or so. Um, as, as this, I really do see this as a transition year. Um, so, um, so look forward to more information on that. Uh, for Monday night. Um, okay, is there any other bigger picture stuff? Councilwoman Cersei. Oh, you're on, you're on mute.
I might have, I, I, I don't know. I never know the rules and I apologize for that. And I know that I said fifty thousand on Monday. But colleagues, if there are, in terms of the public safety task force recommendations, if you all want to um. Suggest a higher amount, given the conversation today, I would be open. Um, and definitely, um, you know, uh, would, would like any feedback from. Uh, city manager, deputy city manager in terms of, you know, what, what we've been hearing. Um, from my colleagues as well as the task force and whether or not, you know, and what we anticipate being able to get from ARPA. Whether or not that fifty thousand dollars would be enough of a set aside. And I know the chief has already started exploring the possibility, the mental health crisis unit pilots. And what, you know, what might be a feasible amount of um funds to set aside. And so one other issue, and I know it's late and I'm sorry y'all, um, I do want to add to the reconciliation list. Um, seventy-five thousand dollars for staffing support for economic development. Um, definitely would, would welcome feedback from the city manager. Um, and the economic development manager um on what that might look like. Um, but I think it's critically important right now in light of the stuff that mu- would be funded under ARPA. Which relates to, you know, economic vitality, stability. Um, the fact that we have such a large number of businesses along New Hampshire Avenue. And um in Ward Five that are not covered by a business authority. Um, I think there's going to be more of a staffing need there. Um, in order to make sure that we're equipped to meet the needs of businesses, but also if we need to distribute funds to businesses. In a quick turnaround under ARPA, having that staffing support would be really important. So I, I do want to add.
It, it absolutely, it's absolutely required. We were anticipating that it could also be paid out of ARPA. Um, that would not be a continuing position, obviously. Um, but we will need to have a number of positions paid out of ARPA to do exactly as you say. In terms of that outreach, managing the, the funds that go to businesses or to uh residents that have been affected by the pandemic. Um, so that we would anticipate a person that would oversee how ARPA's distribution is run. And then for these different areas, we certainly see in housing and economic development, uh, a need for a lot of assistance. Because it's absolutely um, staff intensive to talk with businesses, to get the right paperwork together. To help them because they don't have extra staff themselves to, to accomplish what's needed with these funds and to meet the intent of the fund. So um, I never turned down seventy-five thousand dollars per position. Um, but, but I would say that we did, we were thinking of this on an ARPA list.
Yeah. And I think one of, one of my thoughts about the ARPA list is that it, do you wait? And do you, you could do it through the contracting staff, right? So you, you issue a bunch of contracts to spend the money. Or do you also make sure, depending on the amount of time it would take to get info from treasury on how to spend those monies? And when you, do you take that time to go ahead and make sure that you have the funds and staff ready to go?
I certainly can make a very strong argument that we need the mon- we need the staff now. And that it would be something that would be a role that would continue after ARPA is done. I could make that strong case. Um, so you, if you put it on the reconciliation, we can discuss it. I will check with the Economic Development Manager also about her thoughts.
Thank, thank you.
Councilwoman Devalla.
You're on mute. Are, where are, are we talking about the reconciliation items right now? Or are you still on questions?
I think we've kind of done both, like.
I have, um, I submitted a number of questions. Um, but I, uh, there were, there was one that came up recently. Um, whether the traffic speed study that the Complete Streets Committee. Um, recommended, wh- whether that is already somehow included in the work between Public Works. And police staff that do traffic work or, or in, or in contracting for Public Works. Like to, that's one question I, I didn't ask until just now, like to see how, what that would look like. Is that, can that be done by in exist- with existing capacity? Or is there some adjustment that needs to be made?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
So the Complete Streets Committee had recommended, they sent a letter recently um in which they, they, they had recommended. A traffic speed study citywide to help figure out how to do the changes in speed limit. That we are now allowed to do if we want to do. And I don't know whether staff in Public Works. And I don't know whether staff in public works and, or, and or police have already figured it out. E- either they assumed they were gonna do street by street studies or they assumed they were gonna do a broad study or they assumed they were nothing. I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not, I'll have to check.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I just forwarded both to the W C manager, the C manager, the email, just in case.
Thank you. I, I guess I didn't realize you hadn't seen it.
I don't know who it got sent to, so.
Yeah, and, and, and we've been talking a lot about the ARPA list and I would re, I understand that we are not, um, implementing the ARPA list in this budget. I get that except for the replacement for lost revenue and one or two really obvious items. Nevertheless, we keep talking about it as if it exists. And so it's, if, if it does exist, I would really like to see it so I can start thinking about what might, what might fit in some of those categories and what might not. So that's just a reminder that I've been asking about that. Um, let's see, on the reconciliation list along the lines of the, of both, something that the mayor said last, uh, last Monday and something that, that, that council member seriously said just now. Um, on the climate program, which last year when we passed the climate framework, it named a couple of specific things we were gonna do in the short run. They do not appear to be in the budget. They, in, in particular, the pilot program for buildings does not appear to be in the budget. It appears to be in the new initiatives three hundred thousand. So I would like to, um, following up on what resident comments we, we heard tonight, I'd like to suggest uh, for the reconciliation, the sixty thousand to start on that study. Pull, uh, either pull it out or have it as a separate, as an addition from the three hundred thousand. And then I understand there was, there was more money than that, that was perhaps in the three hundred thousand that might be for climate change, but I'm, I'm asking specifically for sixty thousand to start the building benchmarking study that in my mind is not new because we said in the framework last year that we were gonna do that. So, um, and along those lines for housing and for climate, the same logic, building related climate, the same logic applies that, uh, council member seriously just laid out for economic development. That you can't be ready to spend the money if you don't have some upfront help to get going on it. So I feel like rather than focus only on economic development, we might talk about what that looks like overall. Is it a couple more interns in, you know, in a couple different places besides the ones that are already in the budget? I, I, I don't know what that looks like, but I, I don't know that it's only economic development that's got that short-term planning, long-term spending problem. I'm also a little more optimistic as to how fast we'll get the treasury guidance and how fast we'll get the actual checks. But, um, but I certainly understand the, the assumption that it might be a while before we see either one of them. Um, and therefore we might wanna plan for that in the front end of this coming year budget. Um, that might be it for, for me for now. I, I also, that's not it for me. So on the police, on the police money, I, I feel that the seven percent, I'd like to hear some of the answers to them as questions cause it does stand out in, as, as, as a potential issue for me. Um, as far as fifty thousand for just in case we need it for the public safety task force that hasn't, I, I'm not convinced that that, that that's necessary at this point because the restructuring is so potentially big. It could be a whole lot more than that. It could be less than that. We don't really have any idea right.
We, I, I'm just sorry not to interrupt you, Councilman Devalla, but I think given the time, it's after eleven o'clock. Um, and we'll have time on Monday to debate each of the, the, if, if we could just, I just wanna make sure we can get a really good list for reconciliation and the questions out so that the deputy city manager can circulate it. So.
Right. So I was adding one thing to the list and explain why I was, um. Yeah, I think that.
It's for everybody though. I don't think we have to debate individual things that any of us have put on yet.
Okay, um, so I think that's it for me for now. Thank you.
And I think I just wanted to clarify, I think some of the points I made last week, um, as we talked about. I know there's still questions about how we would do, if we would do a chief equity officer. And I just wanna make sure that we're allocating some funds, um, uh, for that and or community engagement type staff person. So I would just like a line item on the reconciliation that there's, um, approximately sixty thousand that would go to that in the next budget. So I, I think there's still conversations we need to have about what, you know, what's feasible. And if we do do something with Hyattsville, is that, you know, makes sense or Councilman Devalla, do you have your hands up? You're on mute.
Sorry, it's getting late for me. Um, I wanted to say that I'm still not clear what was included in the three hundred thousand and what wasn't because the quick run, I got more than three hundred thousand on the, the first time somebody ticked them off. Um, so it's hard for me to know if.
Councilmember Devalla, there was not a division of things within this three hundred thousand. It was a block amount. Just to, to make sure that there was tax revenue available for what are really difficult discussions about what things we commit to in this coming year with, with tax dollars. So yes, the numbers are gonna be higher. I wasn't anticipating that you would do all of the things that I, I simply reflected a variety of the things that I heard in the discussions that the council has had about what they'd love to see in the budget. And so these were ones that weren't maintenance of effort, but seemed important. So I highlighted them as examples. But you can't just add them up to three hundred thousand. So it's, it's more, uh, unfortunately, it's a discussion uh, about how, what you want included or not. And it, it, it was just a, I was just a pot of money from which to have those discussions.
I think as we're going, as we're, if I could propose that for Monday night, if there's something that you want to see, um, that money allocated or we put it on the reconciliation list.
Oh, that's a change.
Yeah, it is. I'm just.
Okay.
Cause I think it's gonna make it cleaner than trying to keep this pot of three hundred thousand if people are okay with it. Cause I think it'll get too confusing.
Yeah, I, I, I had thought the distinction was, um, things that were either in the budget last year or were things we had decided to do last year to pull those, like the tree pilot is not new in the, in the, in that sense. And neither is the building performance, the, the building, building pilot. I thought that's what we were trying to do and that's why I pulled that thing out. Um, so I wasn't trying to divide up the three hundred thousand right now, but of course it's your call.
Yeah, I just think it'll get confusing because as you said, that we have, there's, we have more than the three hundred thousand that we would probably want, uh, to allocate money to. And so, um, it might, it might be better if we actually, you know, talk about those things, um, and have them listed out, if that makes sense. Um, okay, um, I, let's see, Councilman Devalla, your hand still up. Okay, um, sorry, I just let me finish my list. I was also gonna ask, um, if we do this, if we wanna specify out the three hundred thousand, which we're saying is three hundred thousand, but now every time we keep adding it, it's a lot more. Um, and, and this is like one of those things I, I'm not exactly sure how to do and, and we can think about it over the next couple of days. But like the community ambassador navigator program, which I do think we'll probably be able to spend ARPA dollars on. But it's also like something I wanna make sure there's a place for it. So we can think about over the next couple of days. Um, if we do put a dollar amount in, or is this like one of those things that goes on the ARPA list? So, um, let's see, council member Kovar.
Just a, a quick thought and we can talk more about it next week. Um, I think it's fine to list as many of the ideas as we may have on the reconciliation list. I'd also like us though to think about committing together and then prioritizing that we'll try to have the add-ons fit within the three hundred thousand so that it's not just a wildly open-ended thing where we just put anything. I mean, I, I think it would be great to say we've got three hundred thousand to, for our priorities that are over and above what's in the budget. Let's find a way to stick with that and figure out what order we vote on things. And I guess that would be an issue. But that would be my suggestion for one way to think about how we're gonna operate on Monday.
Cool. All right. Anything else? All right. Well, I think, um, I know the W C manager has already started, um, with the list and I can, um, hopefully help out. And so if people could commit to by Friday morning, providing any other things that you would want on the, um, reconciliation list to the deputy city manager so we can get it in pretty good shape to get out to folks by, um, the weekend. I think that would be helpful for then Monday night, if that works. Lots of hands. Uh, Councilwoman Kostic and then Devalla.
I just wanted to clarify, on Monday, are we just discussing it or are we actually voting on it?
No, that, Monday night is reconciliation night. It's actually, we're voting on, that's why we need to get all the, the potential things. Uh, I mean, you can still add. I mean, obviously you have that prerogative, but it makes life much more difficult for all of us. If you add things on Monday night, um, but yeah, it's like by Friday morning so that it can be added to the list.
And we will do our best to get the information that you requested to us before that time so, so that you have, you can make knowledgeable uh, information back.
Yeah, but our goal is to go through, I'm sorry, yeah, hi, Terry.
I was just gonna say, given the number of things we have on the reconciliation list this year, uh, if someone is, uh, now looking at some of the things on there and thinking that their earlier proposals were not as important, you feel free to pull them off before Monday night.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Though I still don't think the list is not as long as it was last year. Yeah, at least yet. I don't know. Last year's list was like a little mega.
Last year, the budget was hell. I mean, that was, that, that one was the hardest ever. And I, and the council did a great job trying to work with staff to try to get that. It's a little cleaner this year, but it's still hard decisions. So looking forward to, to, to working that through. What happens after next Monday night is that then we take that information and we make sure that all of the Ts and numbers that, all the Ts are crossed, all the numbers add up correctly so that we have the right budget documents for you to vote on, on the twelfth and the nineteenth.
Great. So we'll be using the same like table that we've used in the past couple of years. So if you, you can spend all weekend long taking things out, heading the back end, seeing what it does to the tax rate. Um, so that we're able on Monday night. And I will, um, work with the W C manager and as we've done in past years, try and figure out a kind of a good way of how to go through the list, um, cause that's always a tricky part too, um, when we vote. So we'll, we'll try and figure that out before Monday night and give everybody a heads up on that as well. Cool. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you all. I really appreciate this. I know it's been a really long last few weeks. And I just, I kinda just wanna reiterate again, like, thank you for doing all you do for the city. Um, this includes the staff and council members. Um, so hopefully folks will get a little bit of rest. Um, and we'll come back and do reconciliation Monday night. So thank you, everyone.